Welcome to the April thirteenth, twenty twenty one Norfolk Planning Board meeting. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons that participated on the agenda are present can hear me. So we'll begin with Mr. Peck.
Here.
All right. Mr. Searle.
Here.
Excuse me, Mr. Hunt.
Hi.
We have our administrative assistant, Betsy Joel here with us.
I'm here.
And our town planner is here as well, Richard McCarthy.
Yeah.
And probably a number of other people who are going to be joining the discussion later in the meeting. So this this open meeting of the planning board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty. Due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID nineteen virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with the agenda and materials for this meeting on the town website allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the planning board is convening by the Zoom application is posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference accordingly be please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that and take care not to screen share your computer because anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. So with that. Oh, one last thing with each vote taken this meeting this evening at this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. And with that, let me turn to the agenda. And our first meeting, the first item on the agenda this evening is the Redwood Circle slash New Hill Acres subdivision item. Rich, do you want to let take it into that, please?
Sure. I believe Del Zell was on the meeting via telephone, so. I received an email via just short while ago that Mr. Del Zell didn't get my email to him from March twenty ninth. Copy to Hugo Di Martino on there. And DPW, so. He hasn't probably seen it yet to digest it, but essentially I'll summarize that. Email what's taking place and I can share it if if need be with the planning board. But we actually had a site visit with Hugo Di Martino and Blair Crane, DPW director and Barry Loveriara, the assistant DPW director. Wants the so snow melted to go over to take a look at the field conditions as related to the construction of Redwood Circle and what need to be potentially addressed regarding getting the road up to snuff to be able to then move forward with completion and on to acceptance. One of the things that we talked about out in the field was that there's quite a bit of granite repair work that needs to be done. A lot of it's it's moved, it needs to be reset. That was one thing that was identified. We we talked about some lomenseeing around the sidewalk where the sidewalk degrade, there's a step, you know, it's not flushed degrade. And so Mr. Di Martino. But I was gonna have a communication with Mr. Del Zell just to kind of go over what was discussed then. That hasn't, I don't think has happened, but one of the things I invited Mr. Dalzell to do in the email is to do a site walk. I know he's remote, I think, and believe he can say for himself, he's up in New Hampshire, so it might be a little.
Yes, I'm I'm here.
Yeah, you're in the but you're not you're not local at this point anymore, correct?
No, no, I'm in New Hampshire and on March eighteenth, I had double knee replacement. So traveling isn't a thing I can do right now.
Not could be an option for you, okay.
But I did, I did talk with Hugo back after you had a walkthrough with them.
Yeah.
And I, you know, I told him Hugo, whatever you need to do to make it right. Has to be done.
Okay.
I did have a conversation with them.
Okay.
After you did a walk around.
Okay, all right. Well, that's good. And then so then the only other thing that we could talk about was I did forward. Then we had a subsequent walk with the residents in Redwood Circle regarding the landscaping compared to what you know what was originally approved on the plan through the planning board and I'll share that with the board and the and the folks online as well as Mr. Well, he can't see it, but. Let me just open it up. And the genesis for the meeting was that you know, the the planting plan that was originally part of the subdivision approval, the plantings would be coming in at the at the back end of the development, so they weren't originally planted as part of the development, which is not necessarily unusual. Can I screen share, Betsy? All right, can you see my screen?
Yeah, yeah, we can see it, Rich.
So what we did is this plan represents a plan that I think all the the residents on Redwood Circle comfortable with, which is significantly less than the approved plan. And the other critical part of this that they also at least agreed to in concept with us is to have the trees planted behind the back of sidewalk so we don't get into the situation where the sidewalks are between the the back of curb and the sidewalk. Well, particularly it's only a sidewalk on one side, but they would be on the backside of the sidewalk, so that way hopefully over time, they'll have a much better opportunity to grow to more mature on size over time. We've had, as you drive around town, some varying results as far as side trees within between the grass strip and the sidewalk around town. And so they were comfortable with that, as you can see, not all the trees I can show you if necessary. From the so this represents much less plantings that originally from the approved plan, so what I think we're hoping and I'm hoping is that this plan represents what the residents would like to see, they're not suggesting, I think that might have you know, before was thinking that their landscaper, Mr. Dalzell would do this work. That's not not the case, but this represents some planting choices that everybody seemed to be comfortable with along with DPW. So what we're hoping to is a cooperative collaborative effort, you could implement this plan, the planning board could bless that and you're not putting in as much plantings that was originally called for in your approval. So that's the that's the critical piece about this particular.
That's that sounds great, you know, I I have a landscaper that is prepared to go in and finish up whatever landscaping plan the town needs to have happen.
Okay. So I would then turn to the planning board. Just to we can go through this plan, but as you know, originally the subdivision required a tree every thirty five feet. And then the planning board is kind of stretched it out a little bit. In this particular case, it's even less plantings originally on there and the really the reason for this is if you go out there is each one of these residents have took a lot of time and effort to kind of lay out their yard and their landscape and then the intent of this particular plan that you see is to complement what they've already done. And it's a small neighborhood, there are a nice group of residents that work together and I'm hoping the planning board thinks this is a good idea, Mr. Dalzell, it sounds like he's amenable to implementing this plan and and we can get this this project finished.
All right, well, thank you, Rich. On that point, let me raise that question to the board. Board members, how do you feel about this this plan as opposed to the original plan? Chad, start with you.
Well, maybe I missed it. What did the original plan look like? Did we see that?
We didn't see it here, Rich didn't present it to us. We've seen it before and it's considerably heavier in trees, I believe.
Yeah, give me a second, I'll pull it up so you can. Man, I I just was, I'm just curious to see what the original, I mean, this was before my time, so I just wanted to find out what your yeah, I do vaguely recall seeing it at one of our previous meetings, but like to see it again.
Sure. The as I'm just pulling up the plan, the other thing that we
And what are the outstanding items still to finish this besides the landscaping was was there paving as well and?
It's so as I mentioned earlier, the curbing needs to be reset. Plantings need to be put in, the top coat needs to be put on the road.
Right.
And then the more typical things, which is, you know, cleaning the drainage structures before we go before the planning board in the town would consider accepting the road. And then Mr. Zelzell will have to have an as-built plan prepared and submitted to the board. There's really not. Let's just scroll, bear with me a second as I get to the planting. Oh, what the heck, they go past the planting man?
Thank you, went past it, Richard.
Yeah, I think I did. Quick.
There you go, is that it? I don't want to go back, the the next one up, try that one, try that one there.
Yeah, all right, I'll zoom in. Think it has the.
Okay, so this plan shows a whole bunch of plantings between back of curb and sidewalk.
Yeah, so this this side where I have my cursor, they're all back, they're between the curb and the sidewalk.
And they're probably, okay.
And so the one thing as I mentioned, DPW is trying to push push away from is.
Between the maintenance issue down the road.
Yeah, becomes a maintenance down the road. And then there's the just the amount of trees that are planted here. While I understand overall the to a degree, I guess, aesthetic design of it. You know, it's this alternate plan by the residents is something that they would like to concede consider, which is less street trees. So it actually works with the landscaping. The one thing that we did discuss and they and the the planting plan that you saw that I showed earlier and we can go back to it. We don't really have, there's there's not an association associated with this development, so while this planting islands are a requirement that's been part of the subdivision regulations, we have a gap where DPW doesn't have the maintenance staff to go out and take theirs, take care of these islands, so what we've we've been asking the residents as these roads come forward to essentially adopt them and take care of them, it's like adopt the island and and they have agreed to do that based on with the planting selection that I showed you. Because they've I don't think it's that.
Yeah, did the I'm assuming those plantings then in the island are somewhat you know, drought resistant or tolerant of water because there's no going to be no irrigation there for it.
No, exactly, they're their plans to, you know, to be taken, you know, for the environment to be there by the residents and that you're correct, there was no irrigation, so they again, they agreed, or at least in concept, so. So I think we've tried to put together a collaborative effort here between, you know, Mr. Delzall finishing, working with the residents on the landscaping plan. I appreciate their help on that and standing down in the pouring rain to go through this stuff. And that that's kind of where we're at, so if Mr. Dallas, if the board is okay with it, Mr. Dalzell agrees, it seems like he just said that, agrees to this plan. And now it's just execute the plan and.
And and it is what the residents want, because in in the absence of what the residents want, we would refer back to the original site plan, right, but in this case, you're saying you met with the residents that rather have what's proposed now.
Yeah, and they're and they're on there, so they're on this call, so you can hear it from them directly, so you don't have to take my word for it, but.
I I would. Another thing to note is that the the spacing of the trees of the original plan was a standard that was established by the planning board back when the development was originally blessed, but that standard has been adjusted by the planning board, so if even if we rejected the the pardon me, the neighbors attempted a plan here and went back to a standard, it would be different. And and there would be fewer trees than were shown on that that original plan. Because we've changed our standard and expanded the spacing between the trees. Because when they grow up, they just grow together and that really causes problems, so.
Okay.
Yeah, this is Bill Campbell, I'm one of the residents, I'm for Redwood and yes, we like the new plan and you know, the the trees were the least of our concern, so we like this new plan, yes, we'll adopt the islands. We're interested in having everything else that was on the list done, sounds like Mr. Dalzell wants to complete everything, so from my point of view, everything sounds good, and I know Jonathan, another neighbor is on on the call and could comment as well.
Yeah, I second that, what what Bill said, we're just, we're happy with with this plan here. And we'd be happy to just execute it and and get this finished off.
And any other neighbor wish to make a comment? All right. Any further questions from the board?
No.
All right, well, hearing none, then Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this landscaping plan as a substitute for the original landscaping plan in the in the development.
I so moved.
We have a second.
I think we need to qualify that though, don't we, Walter? Sorry, we need to add that all of the other other list of punch list items need to be addressed as well.
Well, that's a separate issue, I just like.
Sorry.
Fair enough, don't know, I think it's a valid point, but just a separate issue, everything.
So there was a motion.
Seconded, I believe, right, to to adopt this as the alternative landscaping plan. Do we, all right, so Mr. Hunt.
Oh, we didn't, did we get a second?
We did get, I believe you seconded it, Gary.
I thought I made the motion, but that's okay, I seconded.
I seconded.
Thank you for clearing that up. All right, Mr. Hunt.
Hi.
Mr. Peck.
Hi.
Mr. Searle.
Hi.
Chair votes aye. All right, so we've adopted this as the alternative plan. Now to Aaron's point, Aaron, why don't you make a motion to that effect?
I'm gonna need help.
All right, Rich. Could you put up the memo that describes the the walkthrough and the and the list of things that need to be done to complete the the development?
I think the punch list was actually in the last meeting minutes as well.
Yeah.
I'll take a quick look.
Is there a date? I can just refer to the dated document.
I see if it's the March ninth or the twenty third.
Probably would have been the ninth, Gary.
Would have been the ninth.
I think so.
And it's ready to start, Redwood Circle. Yes, it's like the paragraph next to the bottom. Several issues were identified as follows, base course roadway asphalt is in disrepair and needs to be addressed prior to final paving. Granite curving needs to be reset and or replaced, base core sidewalk asphalt needs to be repaired prior to the finishing of the asphalt sidewalk, several drain manholes need to be raised and reset to final grade before paving. Drainage system needs to be cleaned and inspected.
As per the neighborhood meeting on the ninth of March, as necessary to support the planning board decision to minor modifications to the site plan. So moved.
Second.
All right, do we have a a vote here? Let's begin with Mr. Hunt.
Hi.
Mr. Peck.
Hi.
Mr. Searle.
Hi.
Chair votes aye. All right, Mr. Zalzell, we have accepted the alternative plan for landscaping and we've accepted this list, this punch list is what needs to be done to complete it. We thank you for your cooperation in in agreeing to finish it with your contractor. And we look forward to the completion of this this subdivision.
Well, I do too, and Rich, will that plan be available for my landscaper in the next day or so or?
Yeah, so I just I emailed it to you just a short while, it was on the original, I don't know what, it was on the other, I just sent it to you again, so you have it. If you don't.
Okay.
Yeah, it it was attached to the email.
Okay, well, I'll look. I'll look.
If you needed, if you needed, Dave, just reach out to me, you know how to get a hold of me.
Okay. All right, I do.
Sorry, I was on mute, I'm sorry, it was on the email I sent to you, I apologize.
Okay. All right, I'll I'll have to look. I've been a little under the weather the past few weeks, so.
Okay.
Understandable.
Yeah, with a double in the Greek question, I can understand that.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Delzell. All right, let's move on to our next item on the agenda here, Norway Farms A and R Plan. Review and vote to adjust lot lines between lots nine and thirteen. Rich, you're up.
Rich, before you start, that was a public hearing, are we closing the hearing on that Redwood Circle?
Was that a public hearing?
So why don't we just vote to continue till next month, till we're.
I didn't realize it was a public hearing, okay, so we need to vote to continue the public hearing until May May eleventh at seven PM.
I moved.
Second.
All right. Mr. Hunt.
Hi.
Mr. Searle.
Hi.
Mr. Peck.
Hi.
Chair votes aye, all right, fine, now we can move on to our next item on the agenda, which is Norway Farms A and R Plan. Review and vote to do just a lot lines between lots nine and thirteen, nine to thirteen, go ahead, Rich. You want to put that drawing up there that we received?
Yeah, I'm gonna put that up. So is it is it a separate task from Betsy or is it within the packet?
It should be in the meeting packet and also, um.
Yeah, I'll just go, I'll go to the meeting bag. Get into right now, just
let's see it in the meeting.
You do or don't?
It's page forty seven, I believe it starts.
That's probably what I didn't see.
Forty eight, sorry.
Forty eight.
All right, I'll go screen share and.
Yep.
So I believe Mr. Kane is on the line to walk through the.
Hey, Rob, take us through this.
Oh, he's on mute. He takes them takes himself. There you go, go ahead.
Sorry about that. So lot ten, to get a good location for the existing house design that we have. And I mean by a good location, trying to get it somewhat parallel to the street. And you know, at least sort of halfway to the front of the property where the septic is located in the back. We needed a little bit of extra room on the side setbacks. So we took looks like about four hundred and fourteen square feet out of the largest lot on the property that contains the bio retention pond in my existing home. And a little bit out of lot eleven. Which was one of the biggest parcels on the property with the open space design. And then we've just shifted a couple of lot lines going up the street towards lot fourteen, so we'd have a even hundred foot width on the property and we're in the process of designing a new home that will be around forty eight feet. Yeah, add a a foot on each side for some leeway and we've got to maintain that fifty, you know, twenty five feet or fifty foot setback between homes. So we're we're now that we're into the project, we're just trying to make some small adjustments here to be able to continue to go forward and not have to design homes for each lot.
Rob, go back again, what what triggered this domino series of adjustments? What was the initial thing that triggered this?
Well, I I think Rick would have a better explanation, but I know he's on vacation, which is wonderful. So on lot fourteen, if I recall correctly. Well, first of all, lot ten, let's start down there.
Yeah.
That we're trying to use our existing home that we've been building, the farmhouse.
Yeah.
On that lot. And to get that in a good location parallel to the street and kind of forward on the lot. We needed that extra room.
Okay, I got it, I got it, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then if you go up to lot fourteen, that stays the same.
Yep.
But where that's a budding and open space up there, you needed to maintain a thirty foot setback with a residence on an open space. And so that kind of triggered a chain reaction. On lot thirteen, we made that smaller. And then, you know, twelve and eleven.
Yep.
And and so we're, as I said, we're in the process of trying to design a forty eight foot wide home. That has a lot of depth to it, that those lots, so that's that's kind of a unique situation that I'm working with on the architect now. Normally you have a house that's wider facing the street. And you know, narrow on the backyard, so.
Okay, thank you. Questions from board members?
No, in all cases, it's not more than a thousand square feet, is it? It's like six hundred here, four hundred there, it's all small amounts.
Yeah, yes, and and we are not taking anything away from the open space. I, you know, we're we're, we had the approved lots and we're just shifting lot lines. And they're still conforming lots.
Yeah, the number of square feet per lot looks like it remains the same.
Well, what I I did a quick calculation and I I might be off a little bit, but lot thirteen looks like we're adding nine hundred and eighty one square feet.
Okay.
Lot twelve, it looks like we're taking away two hundred and fifty four.
Okay.
Lot eleven, we're taking away, and this is the one that was one of the biggest in the whole open space. We're taking away one thousand three hundred and seventy two.
Yeah.
So those are all going to be the new design narrow frontage homes.
Now, the the, just to pick one, lot eleven on the drawing reads twenty one nine nine seven, that's before you take away the 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 square footage, right?
No, you're looking, I believe, at the A and R plan.
Yeah, that's the.
The the original square footage on lot eleven from the approved subdivision. So the, the original square footage on lot eleven from the approved subdivision
Yeah.
was twenty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine.
Okay, so these have been adjusted based on that lot line change, all right?
Yes, oh, absolutely. So, and that shows you have the former lot line and then where the square footage is, you have lot eleven A.
Yeah, I got it, yeah, okay.
And then lot ten, we added a thousand fifty-nine feet. And, and the only real change on that one, on that whole side of the road, is we took four hundred, I'm trying to see on the, yeah, from parcel A, we took four hundred and fourteen square feet from lot nine, which was my existing home.
Yep, yep.
So it's, again, it's really just shifting some lot lines to try and even up the width of the lots from fourteen, thirteen, twelve, eleven, and then making lot ten a little bit wider so we can use our existing home and get going on that.
What are you going to need to do across the street in one A through four?
Those are all done.
Yeah, I know.
Those are all sold.
Yep, all right.
I'm working on the last septic on lot five and then we're going to start at lot one and get everything seeded and planted and wrapped up in the next month, two months.
Yep, okay. All right, Rich, I believe we need to make a motion to accept the adjustments in lot line per this A and R document.
That's correct.
Okay, so Chair will entertain a motion to accept the adjustment in lot lines per the United Consultant drawing dated March fifth, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
All right, any just further discussion before we take a vote? Hearing none, Mr. Hunt.
Hi.
Mr. Searle.
Aye.
Mr. Peck.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right, Rob, you're all set, I think.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Okay. All right, Rich, I believe we're on to our next item on the agenda, which is Nineteen Shire Drive. Request for site plan minor modification for parking. You want to take us through this, please?
I'll just open up the file and then we can screen share in a moment, so.
I was gonna say, I did, I did put the plan, I believe, in the meeting packet folder.
Okay, so hopefully let's simplify things. Again, situation where the approved plan with its footprint had this, there's, excuse me, let me back up, there's mezzanine space that was added to this project, which the, but there is a difference in this particular case compared to the last one that you looked at on Shire, whereby there will be office space at the mezzanine level. The owners have received an opinion from the architect that's been provided to the building department that it's going to be used for only employee use, so it does not need to be handicap accessible. It'll be available to staff within the company themselves. But as that space, it requires office space parking as well as storage space parking, so there's two pieces of this, one is office, one is storage, but I just want to call your attention to F five, excuse me, F seven, B eighteen. So I know we did talk about storage space, it does say in here, I know there was a question about it in relation to the building inspector last time, but in fact, you know, we do have some calculation that we do calculate for storage, and so this is the computation schedule, which is one per five hundred square feet. And I'm going to scroll to actually one. Sorry. Next slide. All right, okay. And maybe, so if you can see, this is, I went too fast, sorry. There we go, sorry. Okay, so if you look, if you see this where my cursor is in this area here, there's been additional parking spaces that have been added that are parallel. The loading area has been shifted in front of those parking spaces to accommodate it. This, there is no change in impervious surface, the one, the, I'll go to the next slide. So if you look here, this, this shifted, this loading space went over this way, but the parking is on the backside. So when this plan was endorsed by the planning board, this was the layout that was reviewed by data engineering, so there was no, the parking modification doesn't require like the other one, any additional impervious surfaces, so it's just shifting the loading with the parallel parking spaces. And so that's the minor change that's before the planning board to accommodate for that adjusted need in parking based on the additional square footage in the building.
Rich, when you say loading space, what's being loaded?
So the bylaw requires any, it depends on the, so this building is a commercial, it's a New England turf specialist, but the zoning bylaw requires a loading zone be provided on a site plan. So they're just showing you where you could have a loading zone. In this particular case, the equipment will be parked, but it'd be also, there's garage doors in the backside here. The equipment will be inside, so it's really not loading per se, it's just compliant with the zoning bylaw.
Okay. I take any real loading will occur out in the, in the larger area by those storage areas, out those five storage areas.
Yeah, so this is where the material will be loaded really for use of, but.
Okay, all right.
It's just compliance issue, so.
Questions from board members? Okay, any question from anyone else in the audience? All right, then Chair will entertain a motion to accept the addition of three additional parking spaces as a minor modification to the site plan for Nineteen Shire Drive.
I'm moved.
We have a second. We have a second. Thank you, Gary. All right.
Hi, I'm Kathy, I'm with Sports Turf Specialties.
Yes, Kathy.
Sorry, this approval allow us to have our permit to begin? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you.
All right, so to continue with our vote, Mr. Hunt.
Hi.
Mr. Peck.
Aye.
Mr. Searle.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right, we have approved that as a minor modification and I think you're all set.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, next item on our agenda is a request for an A and R plan review from eighty-two North Street.
Does the five minutes matter or just a little early, strange for us?
It does matter and it is really, so we should wait, we should pause, you're correct. Thank you for catching me on that. Why don't we fill it up with a couple of other items here? How about the approval of three sets of minutes, Gary? That'll take about five minutes.
Sure. Uh, let's do that, let me just get the dates here. I would make a motion to accept the minutes, it seemed to me I have them all. Accept the minutes as amended for the planning board meeting on March ninth.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, so any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Hunt.
Hi.
Mr. Peck.
Hi.
Mr. Searle.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I would make a motion to accept the minutes for the planning board meeting on March fifteenth as amended.
We have a second.
So moved, second.
Do we have a, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all right, Mr. Peck.
Aye.
Mr. Hunt.
Hi.
Mr. Searle.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
And I'll make a third motion to accept the meeting minutes as amended for the March twenty-third planning board meeting.
Yeah, we have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Hunt.
Hi.
Mr. Peck.
Aye.
Mr. Searle.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, so we have those approved, that's good. Let's keep going here, and Rich, we perhaps should discuss the street acceptance issues. And then we can come back to North Street.
Want to come back to North Street?
Well, do the street acceptance first, then we'll go back to this.
We, so you got a, just quickly on North Street, you do a request to continue it to the May eleventh.
But we can't, we can't talk about it till seven forty-five.
All right.
I know it's a pain, but that's the way it is.
All right. So we have three roads, three streets that are up for acceptance that refer to the planning board for become public ways, Hampton Road, Liberty Lane, and Meeting House Road. You were, I did forward an email to the board that all through these roads are satisfactory condition to be recommended, or there, there are no issues, so the roads can be recommended to the select board, which they'll be holding the meeting on April twentieth to lay out these three streets. You were provided, as you recall, there was a request to have as-built plans done for Meeting House Road and Liberty Lane, which those were provided to the board, we just got, got those in from the surveyor. And if you had a chance to take a look at them, you can see that everything that's been constructed is within, within the right of way, it's within, not within the right of way, the layout for the road, so there isn't an issue of infrastructure on private property with Meeting House and Liberty Lane. The, so they're in order, I know there was some emails that came in as far as as it relates to traffic calming measures, those be something that would have to be dealt with separately through the DPW department, and whether or not some of those things could be done, it would have to be further announced. I know there was a question about a stop sign. There's a process to go through when we do that. That's not the subject of tonight's discussion on these matters. I know you probably saw a correspondence about the name Meeting House Road. I know the condominium documents for the residents have Meeting House as one word. However, the plan that was, that is on, that's at the land court has Meeting House as two words. So the plan that you have, the acceptance plan and the as-built plan has Meeting House as two words. I did advise the residents if they cared to engage, they could petition the select board, who are the road commissioners, to see if they would merge it into one Meeting House. But for now, for this purposes, it's two separate words. I know there's a question, it is on the official street listing for the town Norfolk as two words. The Lieutenant Shannon is not available, I did ask him, Chad, I know you're a question about the E nine-one-one as far as how it's listed in there. I don't want to guess, but I presume it's two words since it's on our official street listing as two words, but you know, I didn't hear, I haven't heard from it as of tonight, but everything else is in order to be accepted and they're ready to go, and hopefully the board sees fit to recommend them for adoption as town roads.
Rich, there was also an issue in terms of, I believe, Meeting House and possibly Liberty as well, there was some, some takings that were going to occur because of, of deeds, deed transfer. How do that all get resolved?
So it's not, so the appraiser is actually, I'll pull up the plan so you can see it for reference, let's see. So the appraiser is working on establishing a value for, and it's just, it's only a portion of Meeting House, so I want to pull the plan, let's see. My screen sharing with you?
Yeah.
So if, at the top of your screen, you see what this labeling of lot twenty-three?
Yep.
So take, take this line here, go to my right, well, on the screen right. That portion of Meeting House was on phase one of Norfolk Commons. That, we have, we have the owners and we have, and they're going to sign over the deed defeat for that portion of the road. So that, that is squared away. This other portion, which is identified as lot twenty-three, and this is what's recorded, what's recorded, the land court is owned by Paul Barelli. And the town is proceeding to take that fee by eminent domain. The appraiser will have a value for that, they're working on that right now. I don't have that number for you for tonight, but that will, there will be a monetary amount that will be inserted into the warrant for town meeting for acceptance. It's quite possible that amount might be available to the select board next Tuesday night on the twentieth, but I don't have it for you tonight.
Okay, well, should, should we qualify our recommendation to accept these streets with the clause that says, subject to the taking by eminent domain?
I think that would certainly in order, it wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Or Meeting House as it relates to lot twenty-three, that's all.
Okay, fair enough, yeah, fair enough. All right, so Chair will entertain a motion to, should we do these all at once or one at a time, Rich?
One at a time, please.
Fair enough, okay, so we've got, let's see. We've got Meeting House and Liberty and Hampton, so three of them, huh? All right, let's take Meeting House first since it's the most complicated. Chair will entertain a motion to recommend acceptance of Meeting House Road subject to the
Lot twenty-three.
Well, yeah, subject to lot twenty-three being taken by eminent domain.
I'm moved.
Second.
All right, any further discussion on this? Okay, Mr. Hunt.
Hi.
Mr. Searle.
Aye.
Mr. Peck.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right, Chair will entertain a motion to, to recommend acceptance of Liberty Lane at the town meeting on May eighth.
I'm moved.
Second?
Second, just for qualifying, could you just say that that small portion of Meeting House too, if you don't? Let me see if I have.
I said, didn't we say lot twenty-three?
No, no, that's the other one. So it's, remember, there's two of them.
Ah, Meeting House is, it really requires two motions is what you're saying.
Yeah, there's a separate, you know what, so if you look here, sorry to pause, so if you see, this is Liberty Lane.
You're not screen sharing?
Oh, sorry.
We, I remember the drawing, yes, I remember the drawing, yeah.
Okay.
Fair enough, but we're, right at the moment, we're working on a motion that's on the floor, seconded to accept Liberty Lane, we'll come back and deal with that Meeting House piece second in a minute.
Okay, but include this portion of Meeting House, so if I, if you see my screen, there's Liberty Lane is all, Liberty Lane plus the small section of Meeting House, which is it's not subject to the eminent domain, I can give you the stations if you want, that might help.
No, no.
But your, your language for the motion, Walter, did all of meeting, Meeting House Lane, you would add it in lot twenty-three as part of Meeting House. Is that correct? You didn't like the way we worded it, Rich?
No. I didn't, because, oh, so let's rephrase this. So one motion could be to accept Meeting House Road by eminent domain, identify as lot twenty-three. That one, that's
I think we got that motion okay, that one was okay.
All right, now we go to this one.
Yeah.
Includes the remaining portion of Meeting House out to Liberty Lane plus Liberty Lane, that's the
So in other words, there is not a requirement for a second Meeting House standalone motion since, since that remaining portion will be incorporated in a motion within the one we make for Liberty Lane.
Correct, yes.
Okay. So I would propose to amend the motion that we just made to accept Liberty Lane, recommend acceptance of Liberty Lane, to also include the portion of Meeting House Road as identified on drawing.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I think it's from lot twenty-three to the Liberty Lane, is that correct?
From lot twenty-three to Liberty Lane, yes, that's, that's a good way to express it, Gary.
Nope, thank you.
Second.
All right. Now that we've cleared that up, any further discussion before we vote? All right, Mr. Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Searle.
Aye.
Mr. Peck.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right, now we need a motion to recommend acceptance of Hampton, Hampton Road.
I moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? We've seen the drawings on Hampton Road, seen Rich's recommendation, I think even at last meeting, I believe. All right, so no further discussion, Mr. Peck.
No. Aye.
Okay, you're voting aye, very good. Mr. Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Searle.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Okay, so we recommended acceptance of all of those to the select board.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, now we can go to, since it's past seven forty-five, we can go to eighty-two North Street and listen to what you have to say, Mr. Mr. McCarthy.
Well, I understand there was a request to continue with, continue this to the May eleventh meeting, they have to clear up some legal issues related to the property. That's, did you sign extension back?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so we need a motion to to what, to
Yeah, continues.
Continue the A and R plan review
For your May eleventh.
Till May eleventh at whatever time Betsy tells us.
Seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen P M.
I moved.
We have a second. We have a second, all right, any further discussion? All right, Mr. Peck.
Aye.
Mr. Hunt.
Hi.
Mr. Searle.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Very good. Let's see, what else we have on the agenda here, acceptance of meeting minutes?
Fox Run.
Fox Run is next, yeah. Oh, by the way, I'd, I'd like to to acknowledge screw-up I made early in the meeting and apologize to our associate member who I did not introduce at the beginning, and I know he's here on the line with us, Chris Woodford, so please accept my apology, Chris, and a belated welcome to our meeting.
No worries, thank you.
Okay, so Fox Run, Pulte, go ahead, Rich.
So I think, so I did, I did go over this this afternoon with DPW, and I'm going to screen share with you a letter that was submitted to the town from Pulte on a, on a proposal which essentially the essence of the proposal is to, would be to move forward line. Essentially, the summation of this letter is that screen share.
We can see it, Rich.
Okay. So their, their counterproposal to the letter complained was that they would agree to institute form line the remaining drain pipes. If you remember, the discussion was that they felt the, the drain lines were satisfactory and need to be lined, however, they've countered with proposal to, to line them, to form. And it doesn't, in this letter, but but they would also work to put a bond in place, to have the bond, to have a new bond put in place after the line was done. And then have these bonds returned that are highlighted on the screen, so two of those are, one is a D P W bond, two thousand dollar bond, eight hundred fifty thousand is the full bond for the entire subdivision that was originally established. So in discussions with DPW, well, and actually, I apologize, last piece of this letter is that they were, the road accepted at the fall town meeting in twenty twenty-one. So in discussions with John Engler, Pulte Holmes, I think John might be on the line, he said he was going to try, I'm not sure.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm here.
All right, there you go, so he's with us. So what they want to do is, they would like to move, move the lining, up the acceptance. And one of the reasons for moving up the acceptance into twenty-one is more so from the standpoint that here would it not be accepted, more and more things would come up as far as you know, trees or grass strips and so forth, and they've completed this road quite some time ago at this point. So with reviewing that proposal with DPW, they didn't have an issue with going forward with the acceptance in the fall of twenty-one. But what they would recommend and like to see that, once the lining is done, that it would be TV'd by Pulte Holmes at their expense, provide it to the town for beta engineering to take a look, to see if it was done, if it worked, it's worked, done satisfactory. DPW will look at that as well. And that, that video should be provided to the town around July of this summer. If it is satisfactory, then they could, DPW could support moving forward with the acceptance in the fall, provided a bond was put in place, the bond would cover repairing institute form if necessary. It also would include potential pipe replacement if needed, although I don't think that really is concerned from a structural standpoint, because the drain lines have been in for a while. But the bond would be around a hundred thousand dollars. Then they would TV at Pulte's expense the line again back in twenty twenty-two, toward the latter part of twenty twenty-two. And again, provide the video to the town for DPW to review it, as well as beta engineering on behalf of the planning board. If it still seems to be satisfactory, it's done what it's supposed to do, then DPW would support releasing the bond after that. I think they're, I'm not, DPW is, is not necessarily, you know, concerned about structural issues here, it's more the integrity of the drained pipes, so there isn't infiltration into it. So I've, I've reviewed all that with John over the phone. I don't have it in written form, I just have it for my notes, because I just met with him this afternoon, but want to put that out there for discussion purposes.
All right, so DPW is, is in essence willing to, willing to compromise on the date of, of acceptance of the roads to, to the fall of this year as opposed to, to the spring of the, rather, the fall of next year, rather. So they're moving, they're willing to move it up a year as long as it's a bond of a hundred thousand dollars in place.
And there's, and again, yes, that, that's part of it as well as, you know, TV.
Sure, right, yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, questions from board on the, because this is a change in position on our, our part, if, if we agree to this.
Yeah, are there, is it easier to say which areas will not receive any repair, and I assume those are the areas that are perfectly intact, is that correct?
There were, in, in, Gary, I think in, in the draft letter we just saw
Yeah.
from Pulte, there were attachments which describe where they would do the, in, the institute lining this time around, if you can scroll up there.
Okay.
Keep moving.
Yeah, and it's just that it sounded like it would be every place except where there was no damage previously noted, but maybe that's
Or previously lined, Gary.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't mean to interrupt, but previously, we had, we had proposed to address areas with noted deficiencies in this proposal where the, the town, if you will, had, had some concerns about lines that were not previously impacted. So what we've agreed to do is line everything, basically remaining on the project, with the exception of the lower portion of Warren Drive, which has already been lined and or replaced.
Okay, that's what I thought I heard, yes.
So it's basically, if you look at this rendering, it's basically the remainder of the mainline drains that have not already been repaired.
Okay.
And I believe that's a, a change in, in their, in Pulte's position from the last time we discussed this, which is, is I think more protection for the town.
Good.
All right, Mr. Hunt, any questions?
No.
Mr. Peck, any questions?
No.
All right, any, any questions or points wish to be raised by anyone in the audience? Okay, I don't hear any, then Rich, I think we should prepare a letter which captures these changes that are proposed by Mr. Engdahl and, and also endorsed by our DPW and issue that letter to, to Pulte under my signature sometime within the next couple of three days.
Great. Yep.
I don't think we need to take a vote on anything tonight, do we, other than just endorse that letter?
I think, I think endorsement of that letter with those provisions as, you know, outlined would be helpful.
All right, then
Make a motion to accept the resolution provided by Pulte in their letter dated, I don't know what the date of it was, but that would be the motion, does that seem correct?
As, as, as amended by DPW, Gary.
Okay. To what end are we accepting it?
You know, you're, you're draft, you're countering it with a new letter, so your, your new letter would say, yeah, we would, I'm just running through this for you. Yeah, we would entertain accepting the streets in November of twenty twenty-one with the remaining lines being institute form. And the, the Pulte Holmes would have that video, provide video to the town by July first to be looked at and evaluated, make sure that everything was satisfactory done as far as form. If that is the case, then they can move on to acceptance in twenty twenty-one. A bond would be put in place that would cover, it's roughly in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars, but would cover which we'll work on with the contents of that, but essentially to have some money to repair pipes if we need to, additional institute form, TV and and that new bond would be put in place prior to releasing the old bond. And then they would come back at their expense, TV the lines in the latter part of twenty twenty-two, which would, the video of that line, provide everything is satisfactory, would again be reviewed by DPW and beta on behalf of the planning board, if everything's satisfactory, then they would be free of that bond in the end.
And I think the further condition is that they, a hundred thousand dollars, approximately a hundred thousand dollars would be in place before the planning board would recommend accepting the streets at the fall town meeting this year.
Yes. True, so that, that's the outline, the contents of the letter.
So, so why are we, why do we need to accept this letter?
You know, pointing to it for details.
Well, we're, we're, Rich's recommendation is that we, we make a motion to endorse the, the content of the letter. So the letter, the letter has the backing of the full board and not just my signature.
So let me, let me back up. So Aaron, it's not, you're not endorsing the April first letter from Pulte Holmes?
No, we're endorsing the new letter.
You're drafting a new letter in response to the April fir-, is that what you're
So we're endorsing a letter that doesn't exist yet?
Yes.
Why would we do that?
Direct, to demonstrate your support for the position of the board, which will be encapsu- encapsulated in that new letter, which Rich just described the content of.
In the alternative, if you're not comfortable doing that, which it sounds like you're not, we would have the letter drafted, reviewed by the board, and then it would go out after the board reviews it and is okay with it.
Sounds better to me.
I agree with that.
Okay, so then I would, then I would say to Pulte, you've heard, John.
Yep.
The intent of this letter, the formal execution of it wouldn't happen until the board convenes again, which you know, I could have a draft that's out there, but they won't actually vote on it until May eleventh.
Okay, should, should I hold off on starting the work until the, the letter is approved?
I think that's up to you, John. You may wish to get a jump on it.
Well, that's, I, I, that is my, that is my wish and that is my intent. I just want to make sure that moving forward, everybody, I don't, I don't obviously need a vote on the letter. Everybody is saying that the content of that letter in general is acceptable to everybody.
Yes.
Yep. I think everybody's just uncomfortable until they see the final wording, that's all, John.
Which is that's perfectly understandable, hopefully, I'm sure you could appreciate that, so.
And, and for, from our perspective, I think, I think it's a, a, a good compromise for both sides. I appreciate your time. And I, I can tell you that, you know, with, with a hundred thousand dollar bond and, you know, at least verbal acceptance of the, the parameters of that letter, I think we're in good standing and we can, we can move forward.
Okay, well, thank you, and we will work on the drafted letter and be back at it on May eleventh. Unless there's anything else on this.
Now hopefully my work will be well underway, if not completed. Now, hopefully my work will be well underway, if not completed by May eleventh.
Yeah, well, that's good. That's good, all right, anything else on this topic before we wrap it up and move on to the next item?
I think we've covered the. Covered this unless there's any other questions.
Okay, very good, thank you, John, for participating.
All right, thank you.
Let's see, uh, Rich, we still have a few minutes before we can begin our public hearing on zoning articles, so why don't you take us through town planer updates?
Sure, I'll uh. I'll start at the top. So we had a, at the top, as far as the town planner updates relative to the town center wastewater master plan study. Um, we, we actually had an onsite meeting today over at the uh. Park and Recreation Fields with the hydrogeologists. As far as identifying the locations where uh they would like to do some testing. And there is. As part of that meeting, we had DPW. But also Anne Proto from Park and Recreation, the director, as well as um. Who was a member of the Park and Recreation Commission there as well, as we went through the walkthrough. So I will, I just want to let the board know that there is, while. Park and Rec appreciates, you know, the, the planning effort that's going on, looking to the big picture from Norfolk Center. For the potential of, for a wastewater treatment plant. Um, the fields that are being looked at is um. It's their, it's their bread and butter, it's their primary field locations that they run their programs through. Um, there is identified shortage of fields. At this particular time, so. We took a lot of effort to try to do some testing that would not impact the fields. In the short term, as far as do, do the testing that needs to be done from the hydrogeologist standpoint. To provide some additional information to the town. Um, with the thought that. The fields might while serve as a great spot from a, a septic field for a wastewater treatment plant. That there's a big downside to that from a park recreation standpoint, so. In the, in the, in the way of disrupting fields, um, so. We're doing some analysis, the analysis that's going to be done is going to look at, it will give us some data on the fields. But also will take into account the forest selection property that's to the. I guess east of it. And there is conservation property that abuts it, that Park and Rec has been in discussions with them to. Put an additional field in. I haven't had discussions with the Conservation Commission yet, it is under their jurisdiction. Um, they may say no to that, so that might be a nonstarter. But we're doing some testing where we're not into the, we're at the edges, so we can get some good data from a hydrogeology standpoint, hydrological standpoint, sorry. And they're going to come back to us with some, with their find, they're also looking at. At Kids Place, which essentially is a triangle piece of property. Off of Boardman Street that abuts the Hillcrest Village. Affordable housing as well as the, the abandoned rail bed. That goes to Norfolk Town Center. Presently on there is the septic system for the housing authority, but it is approximately three acre parcel, so it does have really. Good soils and hydrology, so that they're going to do some analysis to see. To look at that as another, a potential option for us to give consideration to, so. Um, I'm gonna. Attend the uh Park and Recreation Meeting. Next Tuesday evening, which is the twenty sixth of April. Oh, no, I'm sorry, not next week, the week after that, to just fill them in, so. While it looks great on paper. They're, they're significantly concerned of the impacts to playing fields. So we do need to take that into account as far as. If that were to move forward, there needs to be a plan in place. So that there's not a disruption to their programming. And then it's, it's a. A field. Replacement or additional field, so. That has to become part of the whole analysis point for the wastewater treatment plant, it, it's not. If it's not, it's a nonstarter, if that's not part of the big picture, so. So the engineers are going to do their work to give us the, you know, the, the macro level of what, what could be, and then we'll work from there, so. I would anticipate they're not going to be able to go out with the well drills till May, so we won't really have uh. You know, good data until probably the middle to the end of May to report back, I know Chad has a question.
Oh.
Rich was already, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead, Chad.
So when you're talking about the impact to the fields, is the impact to the field during the testing phase? And, and or during construction, if we go down, get that far?
Both, actually.
Right, okay.
Uh, Rich, was there any further discussion about the expansion of fields down at the Pond Street uh? Recreation area now that we've absorbed twenty, forty-three acres from the state?
So there. There is discussion on that, um, but they need to do some planning, some park. You know, some park, well, sorry, field planning associated with, so they don't have the absolute answer to that yet. Um, and they don't have the money to do that planning as of yet, so that's still kind of. More on the further out horizon, the more near term, which still they don't have the money to do this yet either, which they're working to try to. Come up with that, is the idea of having that field where they're. If you look at the um. You know, where the conservation land abuts the park and recreation fields. They don't have the money to do that as of yet either, so that's still in the planning stages too. It's just they want to. Then, and they did it, and they want to make it painfully clear, and, and telling it tonight too as well. That, you know, while it might be awesome from a leaching field perspective. They're at a, they're at a deficit when it comes to field space, and so. Um, and those are also very good fields as well, they're not, it's not as even as if they're. Marginal fields, they're high quality fields as it relates to, you know, park and recreation, so. We need to bear that, and we need to take that into account as we go.
Could you put a, put, play it up that shows us the, the field that we're talking about and also the adjacent conservation area?
Sure, yep, let me uh, just bear with me a second.
Everybody has that in mind?
Yep, I'll just uh.
And while you're doing that, can you um let us know what the actual inconvenience is from term of time for the testing and then for the actual build up?
Yeah, so the. Let me just get to uh. Sure, I'm screen sharing, my screen sharing. No, there we go. So if you look. You see the map in front on the screen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So this parcel here to the right, twenty-two dash fifty-three forty-one. That, that parcel is under the jurisdiction, the Conservation Commission. So, you know, uses on that property. That are. Not wrecked, you know, backup, so it's not jurisdictional in terms of wetlands, there are wetlands towards the back of the property. But under care and custody, so it's, it's, you know, what, what that property can be used for, so playing fields. I think they've been, they've been advised that that is something that can be done. And not have to change ownership at all, they could do, they could essentially expand the field to this, where my cursor is along this boundary line. Into that area and still keep the property under the um. Under the control of the Conservation Commission, it would just be for playing purposes now. The leaching field could be done with a field on top of it. But I haven't had discussions yet with the Conservation Commission, if they feel that that's gone too far. Under their, under their care and custody, so I don't know the answer to that yet, so I have to. Talk to them.
Presumably the leaching field would be on the, the, the existing playing fields as opposed to the new one, right?
So this is the concern about, from a park and recreation standpoint, this, this image is probably pretty good. Um, because you can see. They don't, the, the media up, so let me back up, so going in. And bringing uh equipment out there onto the field and doing test holes and digging up. That has, that has a disruption to it, and, you know, how you repair it. If you repair it, may take the field out of place, so they might deem, no, we can't use the field. But that's their immediate concern right now. So that's why we're staying to the perimeter, originally we were going to go in the middle, but. That's not going to be the case on this revised proposal. We're going to do the testing along the perimeter, which we can get good hydrogeology, hydrological now, data. Based on the hydrologist's recommendations to us to get us closer to the answer. Um, you know, what's the max, how far they could build it? And then the long term is hard to answer that question because it depends. A lot of variety things, one is when does the project start and finish and where we are with the growing season? So when you, you know, if it's turf, if it's grass again, you know, that takes even more time, you want to rest it before you actively use it, so it could be. It could be a couple of seasons or more, you know, so that, it's hard to answer for there right now, and that's what they're, they don't have.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, would you, would you slide the map a little bit to the left so we can see the end of the conservation?
Sorry, yep.
Okay, I see, all right, uh, we just want to see where that, where that ends, where the boundary was, yeah, okay.
So Rich, this is Chad, so from a testing perspective. We need to get the test done so that we can. Verify what, what we're working with out there, right, means we know what's feasible. As far as how much leaching field we can, we can accommodate to make this work, right? So. Can we? Can we get the testing done or adequate testing completed in the perimeter so that we can get that, that answer? Or do we need to do some testing in the middle? As well?
No, my. From the discussions today in the field with the hydrogeologists and our engineering. Our engineers working on the project, this alternate. Testing protocol will, will get us an answer.
Okay.
We will, we'll, we will need to do more testing down the road, but it will give us a, a better handle on a feasibility standpoint.
Okay, so let's just say we get the testing completed and, and we get that feasibility satisfied. I, I would, I would imagine that once we've, once we've identified how much of the, how much leaching field we need. And I would, I would hope that we could create some sort of a, a staging plan. Because if, if the conservation is open to. Possibly allowing some fields, but maybe not leaching, you know, some playing fields, but not necessarily a leaching field. Maybe you could build some playing fields on the conservation so that you could start staging, you get, you work from the back. Forward type thing, so you build the new fields in the back. Then, then, then you can shift, you can basically decommission some of the existing fields, because now you built some new ones in the back. You, and start building the leaching field in stages, I, I'm just throwing out some options, that, maybe that's a possibility.
No, that, that's, that's, that's exactly what would have to go into the, the, kind of that next level planning as it relates to this, so.
And, and that might fit into, that might fit into what we kind of talked about when we met with the, and I forget the, the engineering company for the, that's doing the study. But, you know, we had talked about, hey, we'd really like to know what the total feasibility is, how much? How much available do we have in the leaching field? How much can we store, you know, what, what's, what's our capacity by the fire station, what's our capacity of leaching field, you know? What are the, what are the maximums that we can accomplish, so we know how to proceed? Because we talked about that, you know, we, we may want to phase this in, so maybe it all kind of works, you know, maybe we can figure out a. A good plan where we phase in the fields, we phase in the playing fields, the leaching fields, and, and we build our capacity that way as people connect to it.
Yeah, Chad, I'll add to this conversation too, again, I, I think this all could be worked out with, you know. Some elbow grease, keep in mind, the town just voted to buy significant acreage at Pond Street. To expand fields at Pond Street, so if the fields are expanded and available upon street, maybe we don't even have the field conflict at Freeman, so I, I mean if. There, there's certainly options to, to continue this conversation, I think.
Absolutely, yep.
No, and that's exactly what we're talking about.
Awesome, mine is great. My, my question would have been that it, it seems that you're having difficulty just doing a test, which is only very small areas to do a test. And actually putting in the fields is quite an undertaking. And if, if just doing testing is disruptive beyond an acceptable degree, I don't see how you'd ever put the fields there. Is this just a question of timing during the year right now, and the fields are in heavy use? Would you have to time everything so that it is around the non-use period of the year? I don't know when that is, at the end of the fall or something, is that when you would plan to put in the fields?
No, I think the short. Be honest with you, the short, the short answer to that is it's, it's disruptive period, so we can't, to try to.
Yeah.
You know, we, we have to have a plan in place to say, okay, this, as part of this plan, we have to address the issue with the fields, okay? And Chad, so we. There's a deficit right now, so there, there, there is a deficit as we speak, so. They're. Hypersensitive to like what we're doing because.
Right, but we just, we just talked about two potential options to solve that, right?
Or someplace else.
Right.
Yes.
Next door or in the, the acreage the town just bought for the sole purpose of adding fields?
So just. The conversation you're having is the same conversation we're having. Out, out in the field, yes, there's component, I'm trying to give you a summary of what, where the conversation is. And where we need to go, yes, there could be a plan, those are the components to it, so. My, my purpose is just to let you know that, you know, you're not going to hit go and we're going from A.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I'm trying to level set, because there are people who have been. On the flip side, they're thinking this is going A to Z, and we're not, and we don't have a plan, so. It's a balance in the show, yeah, we got a plan, we're working on a plan, we're going to have to put this plan together, we got to get there, so we got to go along the ride together, okay?
Now, Rich, the, the money for this plan and to execute the testing and all that, that came from a grant, is there a time uh restriction on the use of that, or?
Yes, yes, we, we have to finish by June thirtieth.
And that's just for the, the preliminary?
Right. So if we go, if everybody's like, yeah, this is feasible, we want to move forward. Then we got to uh make, have an appropriation to carry to the next level, which is the engineering design and permitting, so. We're. We're a ways away.
Okay, uh, Rich, we're, we're approaching our, our eight-thirty uh takeoff on the next major topic. You, you got, you've got like one minute, maybe two at the most to give us the. Update on uh the master plan training in, in Southwood Hospital.
Yeah, I think I could do that quick, um, so. Southwood Hospital, I have it on the agenda, I spoke to Walter to, to have it on the agenda, it will remain on the agenda. And there may be times when there's something of more substance as far as update goes. And other times there, there might be not much, and so tonight, there isn't much to say. That they're working on the environmental piece and they haven't reached out down. As far as looking at development, zoning, et cetera, they're right in the environmental, they're, they're right within the environmental right now. Um, so that's, that's all I can say to that, um. I'm sure we'll have additional information after that, as far as the master plan training, I did hear from everybody about doing both sessions. I will give you some dates, I'll send them to you via email, but it would be after town meeting is done. So we can kind of hopefully put one project to completion and then move to the next one, so that's the update.
And thank you, Rich, thank you. All right, uh. I believe it's time to. Work on our public hearing for, for the annual town meeting proposed zoning bylaw amendments. And Gary, I would ask you to read only the first paragraph of the notice of public hearing. Uh, because I'm going to propose that we offer a motion to waive the reading. And uh, I'll get to that in a moment. So just read that first paragraph, please.
Okay, notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty A subsection five, that the Norfolk Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one at eight thirty P M. In accordance with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Uh, general law C thirty A subsection twenty relating to the twenty twenty novel coronavirus outbreak emergency to discuss. Proposed changes to the Norfolk zoning bylaws, which have been submitted to the warrant for the annual town meeting.
All right, uh, so Chair will entertain a motion. To waive the reading of the entire notice and incorporate it into the record as printed.
Well, I I will definitely agree with that.
So you're gonna second it, Gary, yeah?
I will second that.
All right, uh. Mister Peck. Turn on your speaker and say aye.
Aye.
Mister Hunt.
Hi.
Mister Surum.
I.
Chair votes aye. All right. So we will waive the reading of the rest of that public hearing and put it in the record as printed. Now, uh, there are a number of people on the uh Zoom call with us. Betsy, can you give me an idea how many are on the Zoom call with us?
Sorry about that. Uh, we've got twenty-five.
Twenty-five. All right. Um, can we see them all on the screen, please?
Yes, I can see everyone.
Can can you put them up so we can all see them?
I.
You just have to switch to gallery, I think.
Yeah, if you.
Okay, right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I got it. Hang on. Yep. Okay, so everybody's here. All right. Now, what I'd like to know is how many of you have had the opportunity? To watch the video that the planning board prepared uh on this topic. Because if you have, then we will move on. If you have not, then I propose to show the first ten minutes of that video. Um, which I believe. Rich has queued up and ready to go if we need it. So uh Susan has seen it. Okay, um.
Donna has seen it. Uh, Kristen Belash has seen it.
Tom has seen it.
Okay.
Chad and Aaron have seen it.
Everybody on the planning board has seen it. Yeah, I'm particularly interested in those who are not planning board members, but citizens, uh, interested citizens. It looks like we got a handful who said they had, but the others have not indicated one way or another. Well, on that. It is a member of the B one committee and had added, he obviously has seen it. Well, I can't get an indication here. Has seen it.
You know, a thumbs up. I guess you can ask the question, if you haven't seen, do you really, do you want to see it? Cause we're gonna run about ten minutes if you.
Yeah, all right. So uh, it's, it looks like it's about half and half from what I can gather here. From the thumbs up. But at the risk of of uh repetition, I think we should run the first ten minutes, Rich. Uh. So please uh. Be prepared to do that.
Okay. This goes well. You should be hearing your voice in a second. Mister Chairman.
On the changes that are proposed to the zoning bylaw.
Did you hear that?
Yep.
All right, I'll let it, I'll let it play.
For the town center, also known as the B one district. But you'll be seeing these at the May town meeting.
It's no video, Rich.
This is intended to provide you with an introduction and explanation of the zoning recommendations. So. Information follow-up meetings prior to our May town meeting. To discuss and answer questions about the B one zoning recommendations. These follow-up meetings will include a public hearing hosted by the planning board on April thirteenth at seven P M. For more than twenty years, the town has been encouraging development in town center with limited success.
Full screen.
Lots remain undeveloped. And the longstanding goal of completing a traditional pedestrian oriented New England village with retail, commercial services and mixed uses. Including housing that provides for social and cultural interaction for all age groups remains elusive. Recognizing that the zoning by. Laws can set the dimensions and requirements.
Uh-oh.
Of buildings and their uses, making the economics. Go a B one zoning committee composed of town board members and citizens began the task. Of revising the B one zoning laws to inspire and encourage mixed use development by property owners within the B one district consistent. With the above goal for the town center. What you're about to see are the fruits of their labors captured in seventeen. In zoning bylaw revisions for the B one district in the following areas. New B one inner and outer core map and boundaries. Addition of design guidelines for buildings. Changes to the affordable housing component. Elimination of planned multi lot development. Expansion of allowed building height. Increased residential density. Requirements to tie into town water. Revision to building setback requirements and minimum lot size. Changes to auto and bicycle parking requirements. Changes to allowed uses by right or by special permit. And lastly, revisions to prohibited uses. Please note that the planning board supports these revisions to the B one zoning bylaws and looks forward to their adoption at the assembled. By the assembled Norfolk citizens at the May town meeting. Now let me pass the baton to Aaron Hunt, a member of our planning board and of the B one zoning committee.
Hello, everyone. As Rich just mentioned, my name is Aaron Hunt. I'm a member of the planning board, the design review board and the B one zoning committee. In the past, I was involved with the Southwood Planning Committee, and in the future, I will be involved with the Fire Station Building Committee. I'm a licensed and practicing architect with LEED certification. I'd like to start this evening with some personal reflection on the B one study and move on to a summary, a summary of. The B one committee activities over the last three years. Personally, having first moved to the region over forty years ago, uh, I've had the distinct pleasure of being a Norfolk resident for the last eleven years. I have childhood memories of Norfolk, including riding my bike to Norfolk Center to pick up Jolly Ranchers at the convenience store. And later in life, getting pulled over in a car, not on my bike, by the Norfolk police on the way to Franklin Movie House. Since those times, much in our world has changed. In nineteen eighty, forty years ago, the population of the Greater Boston Region crossed three million people. In two thousand twenty years ago, the population of the Greater Boston Region crossed four million people. In twenty twenty-one, this year, the population of the Greater Boston Region is projected across five million people. The population of the Greater Boston Region is projected to grow at a six to twelve percent rate for the next twenty years. The Boston Region has the third highest housing cost in the country behind only Manhattan and San Francisco. Norfolk is within an hour commute of the cities of Boston, Providence and Worcester. The recently approved economic development bill for the state includes over a hundred and fifteen million dollars in capital grants and loans. In addition to housing tax credits for the housing choice initiatives that promote affordable, multifamily housing, transit oriented development within a half a mile of the M of an MBTA station. Norfolk has an MBTA commuter rail station. Mast dot less recently approved a twenty billion five-year investment plan for the MBTA system. Evidence of this investment is apparent with the track expansion currently ongoing. Uh, in our town and on our Franklin line and neighboring towns. In the last twenty years, the population of Norfolk has grown roughly ten percent or up to one thousand people. As mentioned previously, the population of Norfolk is projected to grow by as much as twenty percent in the next twenty years. Twenty percent growth equals the addition of up to two thousand or maybe even twenty-four hundred people to the town of Norfolk. There are currently seven forty B projects on the books in Norfolk in various stages of development. Four of those seven forty B projects are in the fields, farms and other open spaces outside of the B one district in the town center. And far more than a half a mile from the train station. Growth requires responsible planning and investment. The zoning changes presented here this evening are the work of a team representing the town's interests, most of which are volunteers. We discussed the articles at great length and in great depth. Sometimes we agreed and sometimes argued passionately over just what responsible planning and investment is. Now I'll get into some of the uh more specific duties of the B one committee. On the screen, you can see the current members of the committee, Aaron Hunt, myself, the chair and planning board representative. Uh, Kevin Calcutt, the select board representative. Josephine Cordahi, the zoning board rep. Susan Klein, the advisory board rep. Gary Sullivan and Ed Haddad, both concerned residents. The B one committee mission statement uh is is here for you to read. I will summarize it more point of factly. Uh, our goal was to plan for and promote financially viable and diverse town center. To capitalize on and enhance the existing town center character. To plan for the forecasted population growth over a period of ten to forty years. To proactively deter unfriendly forty B projects. And most specifically to update the B one district town center zoning by law regulations. Uh, as previously mentioned, the B one committee first met over three years ago and at the end of two thousand eighteen. And there were a series of meetings leading up to a town meeting in October of two thousand nineteen. In October of two thousand nineteen, the committee and uh made their recommendations to the planning board and the planning board together went to the advisory board. Uh, for a meeting to put articles to the town meeting at that point in time. Uh, the advisory board raised a number of questions uh which the committee. Uh, started to address over the meetings that have happened uh since then and are outlined in the next slide. So as you can see, we've been very busy over the course of the last two years. Uh, advising and updating uh the articles for discussion this evening. And we are headed towards presenting uh the articles. We have presented the articles to the planning board and the planning board is heading towards presenting them to. Uh, the rest of the committees for presentation to the to town at the April town meeting. The next slide uh goes to show where we have posted the documentation that we have collected as a committee. It is on the town website and it is available there for you. To review when you have the time to do so. Uh, there are also a number of meetings that have been recorded, which can be found through uh the town's website. Our next speaker is from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. Uh, or as will most likely be referenced from here on out, the M A P C. The town of Norfolk applied for and received a grant from the mass housing from from Matt. As housing for planning support of the B one zoning changes study. The mission of the M P M A P C is to promote smart growth and regional collaboration. And they help advance sound municipal management, sustainable land use, protection of natural resources, efficient and affordable transportation. A diverse housing stock, public safety, economic development, clean energy, healthy communities, and inform public. As well as equity and opportunity among people of all backgrounds. The M A P C is an independent third-party consultant. That has offered its expertise and technical assistance to help the town to achieve defined goals for the B one zoning study. Assigned planning staff from the M A P C land use department brings a strong background in design and development issues associated with mixed use town centers. As well as both recent and historical experience with similar studies and projects throughout our region. The project has been led by principal planner Josh Fiala, who is a certified planner and licensed architect. Josh will take it from here.
Rich, you want to cut that? Thank you. Uh, Josh is with us this evening, but we're not going to ask. Ask us to uh review what Josh put on that video. Uh, we asked Josh to be here as as a. A reference uh which we can tap for his expertise. And thank you for being here, George. All right, um, Rich, uh, we're going to walk through. These articles in a minute. Um. You want to summarize the zoning changes and let the audience know how they're bundled and what the voting requirements are, please, at the town meeting?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. The uh zoning articles for the planning board tonight will be, there's two articles that we are bundled together. Under the new housing choice initiative that amended the zoning statutes for the state of Massachusetts. One is. Shared parking. Um, the second one is increase in density. Those two are bundled together. Which under new provisions would only require a majority vote from town meeting to pass. The. There is another bundle group of articles that I'll just. Go through real quickly and we'll get into more detail after that. Which is to adopt design guidelines that will be part of the design review boards, review of projects as well as the planning board. There's changes to the affordable housing provisions in section H three of the zoning bylaw. There will be um, there's changes to remove the planned multi lot development, which is in. Uh, the B one zoning district. There's changes to uh building height and roof construction. There's a requirement that. Will be removed related to hooking up to town water. As it relates to a P M L D, which wouldn't be needed anymore if the P M L D changes. There's a change which by there will be a standard. Thirty thousand square foot lot. And lots will be a minimum of that size. They can certainly be larger. But the P M L D provision would be removed that will allow for small lots. All the way down to four thousand square feet if they um had shared infrastructure. There is um increased in bike parking that's related to uh the vision and objectives of the B one study. There will be um. Addition of a few uses that are in keeping with the intent and purpose of the B one zoning. Related to um uses of townspeople would like to see. We'll get into that a little bit further. There are a couple of uses that will uh be taken out that were special permit. And moved over to um prohibited uses. And then last, which is a separate article, is uh changes to the zoning map, which would. Redefine the boundaries of the B one inner core and outer core. For town center. All those. Articles I just mentioned uh would be the standard two thirds vote of town meeting. They are put into one article, so it's all those items on one vote. There will be um. There are three other articles that the planning board will talk tonight about. And far as zoning changes, one deals with accessory buildings, another swimming pools. The related to. Accessory swim pools. And then there's um. A citizen petition to change the inclusionary bylaw for the town Norfolk, which will be also discussed and recommended in the end. So we'll. I have, hopefully on screen sharing, let me see. Not yet. See. So as mentioned, I have the um. The notice of hearing on the screen. We can go through each article this way, or perhaps maybe it might be better to actually go. Through the um. The warrant itself. Actually, let me see. Think I'll probably go that route. Can you see the?
Yep.
Warrant, all right.
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay, I'll scroll down to article. Which probably helped discussion because all.
Yeah, so as Rich is scrolling down to the appropriate beginning of the of the uh. Articles on consideration this evening, I'd just like to say that what I'd like to do for process here is to go through each one. And have uh a discussion. Uh, or comment or question by any of the board members. Uh, followed by uh inputs or questions or discussion by any of the citizens participating. And we'll walk through one article at a time. And at the end, uh, we will. Ask the board to take a vote to support these articles. ask the board to take a vote to support these articles at the town meeting. So, Rich, the first one is.
So the first one on the screen is amendment to section I6. As it relates to shared parking. The the change would represent a provision so that if somebody wanted to utilize shared parking with compatible with non simultaneous uses. They would allow, there would be the ability to not have to land bank additional space for parking. That would be done through a site plan approval process. Where any new development that would be done under these bylaw changes would have to go through a site plan review process with the planning board. As part of the parking computation for any project, we have section F, which deals with parking requirements. The parking space requirements based on square footage for any commercial use. Would still need to be calculated for. And then if it's in a mixed use project, there'll be one and a half parking spaces per dwelling unit, which will then give you a total number of parking spaces. This provision would allow somebody, if it made sense from a how the project was being designed and constructed, they could get a reduction in parking through the planning board. It's not, it's a, it's a tool to create flexibility. It's not mandated. It's just depends upon the scope of the project that's before the board.
Okay.
The second article.
This, this, this article is is a combination of two, is it not?
Correct. I'm going to read that one next and then I'll pause after that.
Okay, fair enough.
So the second article. The amend section I4A11, which deals with density in town center. The present density in all of town center is 16 bedrooms per lot. Whether it's in the B1 core or the outer core. This proposed change would create a higher density for the B1 inner core. Outer core properties would still fall under the density of 16 bedrooms per lot. So this one and two that's listed here would be bundled together. That would require a majority vote.
All right. Comments or questions from board members? On this first article, which has two parts? Hearing none, let me offer one thought that we need to consider. Should we recommend to the Board of Selectmen when they print the warrant to remain, keep these remained as one bundled? Article with two sections, or should we in fact separate them into individual articles? Thoughts on that from board members?
Did the advisory board give any recommendations on that?
No advisory board will not, will not comment or vote on these until tomorrow evening.
Okay.
We, when we went in front of the advisory board. They had a number of questions about the shared parking article. Which I believe we, we answered. Nevertheless, that was the one that got the most discussion at the advisory board.
For what it's worth, I would recommend staying the course, keeping these two bundled.
I'm good with that.
Aaron?
No further comment.
Gary?
No comments. I'm, I was just going to go with the flow. Bundles or unbundled.
All right.
I can see pros and cons to both, but I say we stay with the bundle.
Yeah, that's the consensus I'm hearing too. All right, move on, Rich.
All right. We'll get back to the end about the recommendation for each one, correct?
Well, actually, actually, we shouldn't move on. We should open it up to a public comment or question before we move on. Anyone in the audience care to ask a question or make a comment or whatever on these, on this article, which has two sections? Well, hearing none, then let's move on to the next one.
Walter, everybody's muted, so.
Well, Betsy, Betsy is, I think, managing this. Are you not? Is there anybody who's raised their hand?
Um, I don't see any hands raised.
I see one. Tom Cleverton is waving his hand at the screen.
Okay.
Oh. Still muted.
Better.
There it is.
Sorry.
Okay.
So Rich, I just wanted, just clarification. In the B1 district, you want to keep it at 16 units per acre?
For the so actually, let me just rephrase it. So under the proposed change, it would be 16 units per acre. Presently, it's limited to 16 bedrooms per lot.
Okay, understand now.
Rich, can we pull up a map so that people understand the area that we're discussing?
Sure. Let's see. Go again here. If it's a man. I'm too fast, sorry.
So which, so I understand that too, Rich. That means that the actual bedrooms will increase, correct?
Yes.
In the inner core, yes.
Yeah, in the B1, yeah, right, Walter.
Well, the B1 encompasses the inner and the outer core. So this applies to just the inner core of the B1.
Gotcha. Thank you.
It's, it's also worth noting that through housing equity laws, it's no longer legal to set zoning recommendations per bedroom. It's now commonplace to do it by unit.
I saw the map. This may not be.
Apparently the map is on this document.
It is. It's on page 40.
Page what? 40?
That's just what I'm thinking.
The, the meeting packet. That's what you're looking at. I'm not sure what you're looking at.
No, sorry. Let me just scroll to the Here, wait me a second. I'm gonna.
How many bedrooms? Well, he just said that.
I'll stop sharing a minute and I'll get to that. Apologies. So what Aaron was talking about, if you recall, last last town meeting, we amended the B1 zoning based on advisory from the attorney general's office from the state of Massachusetts that our previous bylaw was discriminatory against families because it was regulating by bedroom. And then in addition to that, it was regulated a maximum amount of bedrooms that were permissible under the zoning bylaw. Which was not lawful. So we changed in the spring, we just changed the zoning to be 16 bedrooms per lot. And this proposed change would keep that density for the outer core and I'm can show you in a second here. But have the higher density within the inner core. Was page 47 that we said, Aaron?
50.
50.
Forty.
Forty.
Forty or 69.
All right.
Is the one in the packet.
Yep, that's what I'm going to, sorry.
So Rich, on the inner core, then they can be one, two, or three bedroom units. Is that correct?
It can be, yep.
It's also on page 13 of the packet.
So can you see the map to the right hand side?
Yep, we can see it.
Yes.
So this darker color brown, I guess I'd call it, at least looks brownish on my screen, would be the new boundary of the inner core. And what, what has happened is it was much larger, the outer core. So all this area here was part of the inner core. Which based on the discussions through the zoning analysis, was, it's already developed properties and it also includes municipal property. So it did not make sense to to change, to down, to downzone it to the outer core made sense. The one other adjustment was sorry, things move around the screen. There was a prop, there's a property on Union Street that goes further deeper past 18 Union. Is recommended to go to the outer core, which it still can be mixed use, but it's at a lower density. So the maximum bedrooms that could go there would be 16. But again, that's going to be based on what you could put on a piece of property based on coverage and and septic system, how large a system can be.
So it's worth, it's worth reiterating here as we're talking about this map, right? The dark red area is the B1 inner core. And we're talking about roughly 27 properties, four of which are owned by the N P T A. One of which is Walgreens and only eight of which are undeveloped.
Correct. The last quick summary changes on the map is there was two properties that were further into Boardman Street where my cursor is. Hopefully you see my cursor. Which there was concern that the B, B1 district extended the higher density a little bit too far into that neighborhood. So they've been removed from the B1 inner core, which is has a higher density to be one out of quarter. The presently two single family homes. They are legal, nonconforming uses. A single family home is not allowed use within the B1 core. They can remain that way as is. If they were to be demolished and redeveloped, they'd have to be combined because they're both less than 30,000 square feet. In total area, they would have more restrictive setbacks as part of the outer core. So as a practical matter, most likely they will remain the way they are, although you never can predict the ultimate outcome, but they're being down zoned to, to a more restrictive.
So since I got us off on this tangent, I'll bring us back. The two articles at hand are changing 16 bedrooms to 16 units per acre. And the 30% reduction in shared parking per per approval and documented need by the developer.
Are there any other questions or comments from anyone in the audience? I can't see all of screens, but Betsy, I think can.
Nobody?
Anyone, Betsy, raising their hand?
I am not seeing anybody. Let me just scroll through here, Walter.
What are the ways to raise a hand? Is that worth mentioning to folks? Could say something in the chat? You could, you could physically raise your hand on the screen if you're on camera.
Yep, and you could also raise, raise your hand through the
Raise hand function or?
Raise hand function at the bottom of the screen.
Walter, I don't see anybody that's looking to make a comment.
Very good. Thank you, Betsy. All right. In that case, I, I think that we should vote on, on these to support these or not support them. As we go along. And so Chair would entertain a motion to support the article on shared parking and density at the town meeting.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any further discussion on this before we take a vote? Very well, Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Mr. Peck?
Hi.
Mr. Searle?
Hi.
Chair votes aye. All right, let's move on, Rich. The next one is a long one, so lead us through it.
So we'll move on to article 22, which was, I mentioned, a series of, is related to the B1 changes. All these articles that we'll be discussing going forward from this point will be a two thirds vote. I just want to just remind everybody of that provision. The first article, well, excuse me, section one of article 22.
Rich, sorry, for a point of clarification. Are these articles bundled or are they individual?
They're bundled. So it's
There's one article with, with many proposed amendments to the bylaws within it.
Approximately, I think it's 17 different changes in one article. So the first, the first change deals with site plan approval. Whereby the design guidelines that have been developed through the planning study would be incorporated into the site plan approval whereby when a project goes before the planning board for approval. These projects we've evaluated against the design guidelines. Design guidelines cover materials, pitches on roofs. Landscaping, orientation. The various design elements of any project, screening, parking. And that would be part of the analysis and findings the planning board would be will be going to be made for any project within the B1 core would be against the design guidelines. I'm gonna just pause and go to the next one too, just for, to keep them same conversation. The second change is the design review board would measure projects against the same design guidelines. So they're working from the same design guidelines. The design review board, when a project meets the threshold for them to review it. The project is forward to them, which includes a site plan, building elevation, landscaping. And they provide recommendations to the planning board. Which by the planning board can adopt those recommendations into their site plan approval process. So these two are, are together in terms of we want to be on the same design guidelines. And the approvals will be incorporated together. That's what one and two are. I would pause here, Walter. I think it makes sense.
I think we should pause. Any comments or questions from board members? All right, then any comments or questions from anyone in the audience?
All right. No, no hands, no one want to?
Nope, I don't see anybody.
All right.
All right, thank you. Well, then we'll move on to the next section. Go ahead, Rich.
Okay. And we're gonna, just for clarification, we'll come back to each one of these. Do you want to vote on them, each one of them, or?
We'll vote it as a bundle because it's going to appear as one article.
Okay, all right.
Rich, I'll jump in to say that for the public listening, that the design guidelines are available on the town website if you'd like to review them.
Correct, yes. Okay, so I'll move down to the next provision, which is dealing with the amount of affordable housing that would be provided as part of any development within the B1 inner or outer core. Back just for brief history on this. Back in 2019, when these, this provision was discussed as part of the series of zoning recommendations. The recommendation was to have 15% affordable, which would be, which is above 10%, which is currently within the inclusionary bylaw for the town. Up until as far as January of 2021, 15% was what the recommendation was at the time. There was discussion from residents that the planning board took into consideration relation to this provision. And so they adopted a, a higher thrush, a higher requirement as it relates to affordable housing, which starts at ten, goes to twelve to ten percent. And then it increases from thirteen, thirteen units to nineteen at fifteen percent. And then twenty percent above twenty or more units. In addition to that, this provision rounds off to the nearest whole number under the clear, under the current inclusionary bylaw for the town of Norfolk, it does not have the rounding as it relates to affordable housing. Throw it out. Or discussion for the board and the public, Walter.
Yeah, any questions or comments from board members?
I'll jump in, Walter.
Yep.
Uh, I'll repeat myself from past meetings, but I, I think again, we're presenting some complicated issues to the town uh for decisions and I believe the citizen petition uh in a related but unrelated subject or related subject, unrelated article could prevent a confusing situation at town meeting. So while I am personally in support of the citizen petition, it is in conflict with what's in front of us here for the recommendation for the B one district. And I would recommend that we, we as a planning board, consider one of two things. One is potentially uh speaking out against the citizen petition uh as it's not something that we've reviewed as a planning board, or two, supporting the citizen petition and uh using the numbers in this section to be consistent with the information that's being presented to the town.
Yeah, uh, the citizen petition article is actually at the end here and we will be discussing that and taking a vote on whether we support it or not. So your point is well taken. It just, we're gonna get to it a little later.
I just wanna add something for the board in consideration as you move forward. So this article as printed was as advertised. So in speaking with town council, if you were, when you get to the point of voting, the opinion of council is that you would be outside the scope of this article if you were to try to move this ten down to six as a motion. It would, it would increasing, it would be more restrictive than what was noticed in at, in the advertisement. Now, when it gets to town meeting floor, that's a different story, but you, you don't have that latitude right now where things are. Information or for background.
Yeah, and I'll add, you know, I'll add that this has been one of the most discussed points and this being a bundled subject, uh, you know, it, I, I think us all being on the same page and us presenting the information as simply and concisely as possible is, is important. So I think we need to strongly consider all options here.
Understood. Open up the questions.
Yeah, any, any further questions from board members? All right, any questions or comments from anyone in the audience? I see one hand, but there, there may be others. Betsy, who's, who's raising their hand?
I'm scrolling through, Walter. I, Peter Diamond has his hand raised.
Okay, Peter.
The only one that I see.
Fair enough, Peter.
Good evening, Walter. Can you hear me?
Yep, I can.
I just want to point out that your proposal here just applies to the B one district as far as the affordable housing concept in this section D.
Yes, this is just for the B one core.
And the citizens petition is, covers the whole town. So just wanted to make that comment.
Yes, yes, that's true. That's true. Now, I, I think we will find, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, that, that the only just difference between what is printed here and what we're looking at on the screen and the citizen petition, which we'll get to a little later, is, is one number. And occurs in the second line of what we're looking at here. And I'll read it. It says, any project in the B one business core that results in a net increase of between ten to twelve dwelling units. In the citizens petition, it says between six and twelve, I believe.
That is correct, Walter.
Okay, so ju- just for, for those of the audience who didn't understand how these may be different, that's the only difference between this language and what we'll see later in the citizens petition.
As Walter, just a little bit on that same subject matter. As this one has a, a different threshold, it starts at ten um as opposed to citizen petition starting at six. And then the citizen petition is six townwide, uh but as it relates specifically to the B one, the, um, the restrictive or more restrictive provision would um be the one that would prevail. So for example, if town meeting approved this um and then subsequent to that approved the citizen petition with the six, it would have affected this in terms of it would go down to six. And it, it's, it doesn't necess, it doesn't matter the position of the articles on the warrant. So for example, the citizen petition was first and it was six, then we'd have to make an amendment to this because it would be more restrictive, it would be in conflict. In the reverse, if this goes first and this passes, there is an internal conflict that needs to be resolved at this point. It appears the, that's gonna have to be a, a resolution before town meeting to resolve that. Or, or maybe not, depends how things.
Yeah, understood. Okay, any, any other questions or, or hands raised, Bets?
Scroll through.
Okay, seeing none, then let's move on to the next section.
I don't see any hands.
Thank you, Betsy.
I think, oh, jumping ahead by Aaron, which no, no, no issue there. Uh, we've covered the next one unless we want to go back to the map a little bit more.
Well, I, I think we've covered that district boundaries.
Okay.
Well, uh, let's just say that we've covered it to the degree that we, we got all the comments from ourselves, the, the board. But if there's any further questions for anyone in the audience, we should allow them a chance to raise their hand and, and comment or, or ask a question.
Yep, and I, I think we should clarify, given the previous conversation where we were again talking about a townwide zoning change, the, the actual article that we're reviewing right now is specific to the B one district only and the map that we reviewed earlier in this meeting.
That's true.
Right, yes.
Okay, so the map refers to this district boundary. And is there anyone in the audience who would care to ask a question or make a comment? Betsy, do we see anybody?
I'm not seeing anybody. Let me just scroll through, Walter. Nope.
It's, it's easier in, in, when we're all back in the town hall, you can see who's waving their hand a little easier.
That's true. All right, so I'll just go back to my other shared screen, sorry. My computer had a little timeout there, so.
Want me to jump in, Rich?
Or if you want to fill the spot while I get the?
Sure. So the, the next item up is section I four A two, which is planned multi lot development. Uh, the planned multi lot development scenario was introduced a number of years ago in an effort to try and promote, promote a way to have multiple landowners come together to, to develop property in conjunction. And discussions with the B one committee, it's a bit of an outdated strategy. It has, I think, only been used in town once. And the recommendation of the B one committed to the planning board was to strike all of the planned multi lot development language uh from the zoning guidelines.
And the, the only additional thing I would say on, to this point, there isn't any prohibition about having multiple buildings on one lot to share the same infrastructure to, to accomplish the same result now. Um, it makes it maybe the owner might have to do a little bit more work as far as condoing land and, and land leasing and so forth, but if there is another alternative way to do without having to be done through the zoning bylaw to accomplish the same result.
Any further questions or comments from the board? Uh, any questions or comments from anyone in the audience?
I see none. I don't see any, Walter.
All right, thank you. All right, Rich, scroll up and we'll move on to the next section.
Okay. So similarly, we have a provision about phasing as it relates to the P M L D. So we're just, this is somewhat I would call more of a housekeeping in terms of we want to have phasing if it's a phased project, so we understand how it's going to be done over time. But we don't need to reference the P M L D if that's being removed from the bylaw. So that's what this, uh, I, number six.
Yep. Any further comments or questions from the board on that one? Or any questions or comments from the audience?
I don't see any hands raised.
Well, thank you, Betsy. All right, then we'll move on to building height and facade.
So building height has changed from the original recommendation, which was to fit three and a half stories of habitable space within forty-six feet, um, under the previous recommendations. Much discussion after the fall of twenty, twenty twenty, excuse me, twenty nineteen, and additional work of the B one. The decision was to adjust the height whereby the building, which includes the peak of the roofs, could be forty-six feet to provide architectural elements, can provide a nice habitable third floor, but it is three floors maximum. So first, second, third, provides the opportunity for creating wider floor to floor heights as far as the first floor commercial goes. And then the second two floors, you have the ability to do additional planning for space to create, you want to try to have a little bit more hap- higher ceilings in the second and third floor. But the maximum height to the, the peak of the roof is forty-six feet. In addition to that, this would only be applicable to the B one core. You could, as you see, the B one outer core, you, you can get up to, to forty-six feet, but the starting point is forty feet. You have to make the case to get to forty-six feet. It's still only forty. But so, again, the the consensus was that we want to provide building flexibility, particularly as it relates to the height of the building to provide those architectural elements that people really come to enjoy when it comes to New England architecture, you know, dormers, gable ends, pit, you know, pitch roofs, et cetera. So that's the purpose of this change.
Thank you, Rich. Any comments or questions from board members? Any comments or questions from folks in the audience?
Just to, just to clarify.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Betsy. I didn't catch that.
Peter Diamond has his hand raised.
Okay, sure, Peter.
A question about the building height. It's gonna be a full three stories. As
Yes.
developer will be able to develop three stories and the half story is a roof line on, above that. Is the developer allowed to develop that half story for use in any way? As written?
Not for habitable. It's three stories, three floors, three stories, three habitable. You want to have a attic, you could, but it can't be habitable space.
Okay, thank you.
Gary, you want to say something?
Yeah, I, and it was along the same lines. I'm just wondering what could be above the three full floors? And if you're going to distinguish just by the word habitable, so you could have common area up there that's used by all the people in the building?
No.
No, okay.
No, that's.
Common area is habitable.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
If, if I could, if, sorry, I was, I was just gonna add, perhaps the, the most functional use of that space may be for HVAC equipment or the like, I would guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For other building services, sure.
All right.
Yeah, uh, Betsy, anyone else raise their hand?
Let me take a scroll through, Pete, Walter, I don't. I see now, no other hands raised.
All right, thank you. Let's scroll it up, Rich, and go to the next one, please.
Okay. Pretty, this next number eight, pretty straightforward. We're just deleting the reference to plan multi lot development. Um, new projects do need to connect to municipal water. And so there's really more of a just a housekeeping in terms of the P M L D. We're removing the reference to it.
Right, okay. Any comments or questions from board members? If, if not, any comments or questions for anyone in the audience on this one?
Being none.
Okay, thank you, Betsy. Then scroll up and we'll move on.
Okay. So as we, we touched on earlier with the removal of the P M L D, we're removing the, the lot references to it in this section as it deals with dimensional requirements. But in addition to that, there is the build to line where buildings need to be situated within the B one inner core. And we're matching that up with the build to line. So for example, the minimum front yard will be six feet, which matches the build to line, which starts at sixteen feet, goes all the way up to nineteen feet. So we're creating some consistency there as far as the build to line and dimensional. Removing the dent dimensional, again, reference to P M L D. As it relates to the outer core, again, moving the reference to the, to the, the P M L D, just draw your attention to, um, you know, there is not a build to line in the outer core. Um, the minimum front yard is twenty-five feet, which is much greater than the inner core. And that's the, essentially, that's the, that's the intent of those proposed changes. I'll pause.
Any questions or comments from board members on this one? How about any questions or comments from anyone in the audience?
I am seeing none, Walter. Oh, Peter Diamond raised his hand.
Sure, Peter.
Thanks, Walter. I don't know if it's further down in the zoning here, but this
I don't know if it's further down in the zoning here, but this is for mixed use development. And with your mixed use plan that you're presenting here, is commercial the only type of development for the first floor and residential has to be above it?
Yeah, uh, although we do allow a second building on a lot, uh, which can be residential on all floors.
So they can have. Just, just for clarity, though, Peter and Walter, that is a subject of a later article item. So we might want to hold off on that one.
Yeah.
Thank you, Aaron.
Other comments from the public related to this, these? Number nine?
I'm not seeing any other hands raised.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Betsy. Let's move up.
Well, I guess I already tackled ten, so.
Yep.
I called eleven, too.
I called eleven. We need to. So this is new discussion. This is, uh, as I mentioned, just providing, uh, additional bike parking. We certainly, it could be on a paved surface, but it also could be incorporated into a landscape element. So I know this came up at the advisory board the last time, but we do want to provide bike parking since we'd want to try to encourage bike, um, use in town center.
So we've changed the requirement from one per twenty parking spaces to one per five parking spaces. Or we're proposing changing the requirement.
Yeah, yep.
For the B one district, correct?
B one district.
Uh, any comments or questions from, uh, the board other than what we've already mentioned? If not, any comments or questions from folks in the audience?
I'm not seeing any hands raised.
All right, thank you, Betsy. Next one, Rich.
Thirteen. So you, as I scroll here in the middle of the page, you see removal of dance, exercise, aerobic studios, and martial arts studios. This being stricken, however, it's being added and I'll scroll down to a new use, which I'll go further down just so you could see it. So you see it's in here. Um, it would fall under wellness, dance, exercise, aerobic studio, martial arts. It's a little more expanded as far as type of uses, I think, that would fit well with the intent of what people would like to see in Norfolk Center. Um, so that's while it's being deleted. It's being incorporated into another newer use. Um, as I mentioned, the limited used automobile vehicle sales is, uh, in the identify is probably not something to be consistent with the purposes tend to be one. So that's being proposed to be removed. Um, similarly, um, a standalone principal parking lot use. Um, there's something that's being removed. Um, we already have those in a way that are MBTA parking lots. Um, this is something that would be done by a private party. So that's being proposed to be removed. Um, something that might become a little bit more interesting as we go forward, uh, shared work facility. So people could share a common workspace um, within the B one. That's something that's being added. Um, I'll go down to the next one, just so you kind of tops off the uses. Um, gasoline diesel fuel filling station. We have one in town center. It's not something I think that would work as far as the probably intent and goals and purposes of the B one. So it's being proposed to be removed. The one that exists today will remain as a legal non-conforming use. It has been more recently expanded. It really is expanded to the maximum of the property itself. So it certainly would continue to enjoy its use that it is today. And provided, and if it changes hands, provided it's continuously operated for that use, it can continue on till someday people decide whether or not it makes sense or not to have a station there.
Or until it converts to an electrical charging station.
Or it could be converted, right, yep. And then I'll just top it off, so to speak. Like that, the gas top off, no, I'm just kidding. Anyway, um, so, so we're adding them to, uh, like I said, we're taking them out and put them into the prohibited use section of the bylaw. So I'll, I'll pause there and I can scroll back if need be.
Okay, so, uh, what we've just looked at were the, uh, the, uh, changes to the allowed use and the prohibited use. And Richard went through those. Any further comment on, on, uh, these changes to allowed uses, uh, from board members?
No.
Uh, okay, any, uh, any questions or comments from folks in the audience?
Um, yes, actually, we have a question from Kristen Balas.
Hi, everyone. Um, I'm on advisory and we are talking about this tomorrow, but, um, I did have a question that I raised at an earlier meeting with advisory was, um, if we can get clarity on, um, dry cleaning versus laundry mats. Um, I know this is not the, the main part of this article. Um, but we have K M K cleaners, um, in right outside the, the core district. And if they wanted to move to the district and this had passed, would that be allowed? Um, I know that power laundry and dry cleaning is prohibited. Um, but if it's offsite dry cleaning, you know, it's maybe it's a zoning question, but kind of, um, where do those types of, um, uh, businesses qualify as under this, the zoning?
The answer, uh, I think what I, my best approach would be to run that by Bob, just to get his interpretation. I know, I know it's the advisory board. David had spoken about this being more the older traditional where there was actually cleaning that was going on site, but at this point in time, as the industry has evolved, it's really the drop off pickups. So I have to talk to Bob. It could, the, Bob Bullock, who's the building commissioner, zoning enforcement officers to answer that question. Um, because we're not unfortunate, I know you, it, it shows up in the, um, down here under dry cleaning and our power laundry. So we can't do technically anything. We're not addressing that under the those changes. So I'd have to ask him about if, if that scenario occurred, what would happen right now? And then depending upon, I guess, the result of that is whether we need to make a, another adjustment to the zoning by law.
Yeah, I figured something that would be a very future problem to have, but, um, I just, I was thinking about how that's, um, when we think about the vision for this district, like pickup, picking up dry cleaning is like a pretty common thing people do. Um, and there's already one there, but if they wanted to move a block over, you know, I just want to make sure that, um, that's not, you know, something that is prohibited, but I think, um, some of the language is old. So thank you for looking into it, um, future problem, but, um, we're gonna raise it here. Thanks.
Okay, so thank you. We will, we will, uh, address that, but we can't do it here, but we will address it. Okay, any other hands raised, Betsy, on this one?
I don't see any other hands raised or any other questions.
All right, thank, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Chairman. I think it, it's probably worth circling back on Peter Diamond's question because it is, it is relevant to this section of the bylaw. So, um, mixed use is commercial on the first floor residential above. However, if you look in the middle of your screen, there is this other provision where there's a ratio between, uh, commercial and residential, which is a sixty five thirty five split, but it's also based on, um, building footprint sizes and so forth where you could have um, a second at all residential building, but it's got to be in a ratio proportion to what's the commercial as part of the development. We don't have a all residential allowed use in the B one zone, whether it's the inner core, outer core. So residential is either in this split fashion sixty five thirty five, or it's residential above in mixed use.
Okay.
But just to be clear, this isn't really where that's relegated. That's in the next article, right? This is just a clarification that you can't have residential only in this district.
Yeah, I thought it was.
The next article item would really is, I think, gets to what Peter's question is. I don't want to talk for Peter, but.
So we could, well, his hands up, we can ask him or we can wait, go to the next one.
Uh, through the chair, Walter, on the, um, removal of, of gasoline station as an allowed use. If in future development of that property, they wanted to build a second floor and put offices or possibly apartments up there, they would no longer be allowed to do that. Is that correct?
I, that's not clear to me that, that they would be prohibited from doing that. No, um, it would, it would, it would seem to me what we, what with a language would prohibit was, uh, John Smith coming into town and saying he wants to put up a second, uh, filling station somewhere within the B one district that that would be prohibited, but I don't see how this language would prevent him from expanding, uh, vertically and putting a second floor on for offices or whatever.
Well, I'll explain because now it becomes a non-conforming use. You're no longer allowed to expand that use in any way, which would include adding a second floor.
But they could, they could always come in for a special permit to expand a non-conforming use. Uh, but that's been grandfathered in, right? So I mean, it, I mean, by, by right, you may be right, Peter. By right, they may not be allowed to put a second floor on, but they could certainly come in under special permit and and be granted, and be granted that i- if so deemed appropriate.
Yeah, I, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, enough. So I think the additional challenge part is that you're going to have to provide parking on site for the residential and so something's going to have to give to make that happen there. But.
I bet take, right, but take the concept even further, right? Say the owner of the gas station bought the property next door and they did a combined development. They wanted to keep the gas station on the corner. Right? It becomes a, a, a non-conforming use that would, would need to be approved by special permit.
Yeah, they could explain.
Yep. Okay, any other que- uh, hands raised here, uh, Bets?
I am not seeing any Walter.
All right, thank you. Okay, Rich? Take the next one.
Now I'm onto the the map. Okay. So that.
This is a separate article, though, right?
Yeah, so that, that's it for that article.
That's it for that article? All right. Then, uh, if that's the case, uh, the chair will entertain a motion to support that, uh, multi-section article uh, at the town meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Hunt.
Hi.
Mr. Searle.
Hi.
Mr. Peck.
Hi.
Chair votes aye. All right, thank you. Uh, go ahead, scroll up and we'll work on the next one, uh, which is that map and zoning cha- uh, zoning boundary change.
So we did, you know, if you want, we did go over the elements of the change to this map. I don't know if you, the only, well, I will say the one other thing I will say, and then I'll pause, is we did extend the B one a little bit further on to towards, uh, wall pole on Main Street to coincide with the fire station. So that, that is a slight expansion. Um, and that's the la- as that change here. And then the one other change is the, the house that's in, in between, uh, the former gross property, Frank Gross's property that abuts the rail, rail line. And then the forty B, which is this property here that's shown as the outer core, um, was pulled back the inner core a little bit, one property.
Yeah.
And that's the, and that's the elements of all the changes to the, the zoning map for the B one inner and outer core.
Okay, any, uh, questions or comments from board on, on this one? Uh, anyone from the audience here to comment or question?
Walter, I don't see any hands raised or any comments.
All right, thank you, Betsy. All right, so move up, uh.
Walter, if I, if I might.
This, this is a separate article. We need to.
Separate.
Is that right?
Yes, yes, separate article.
Uh, go ahead, Aaron.
Uh, I'll wait till we're done with this one.
Okay.
The only, the next item, uh, would be to, uh, take a vote to support this article. But so before we do that, if you have a comment on.
Nope, I, I need to back up, but I'll, I'll do that once we're done with this one.
Fair enough, okay.
We just, we just need to change the date to May eighth. The town meeting is May eighth, not May eleventh.
Oh, yes, I didn't see that, right?
No.
That can be taken care of when the law is printed, can it not?
Yeah, yeah, but it's good to put in your recommendation, that's all.
True, true. Okay. All right. So chair will entertain a, a motion to support this article, uh, as amended with the date changed to May eighth.
I moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any further discussion before we vote? Hearing none, uh, Mr. Hunt?
Uh, I'm realizing here as I scroll through the remainder of our articles that I believe I misled the group with, uh, Mr. Diamond's question on, uh, the residential and commercial split. I, I do not see another item that addresses it.
Well, can we hold that until we vote on this, this article, however?
Oh, uh, yeah, sorry. I thought we did that. I missed.
So, so your vote is to support this or not?
Oh, sorry. I, I.
Fair enough. Uh, Mr. Searle?
Hi.
And Mr. Peck?
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. All right, now go ahead, Aaron.
Uh, repeat myself. Do I need to repeat myself?
I could, well, no, you, you. I can scroll back up, Aaron, to help.
Yeah, go ahead. Scroll back up and, uh, you can clarify, Aaron.
All right. So if you look, um, hold on a second. Let's get, okay, um, all right. So if you look at middle of the page here, um, it says residential dwelling units located above the ground floor of buildings provided that in the ground floor is constructed for and limited to business or commercial uses prior to residential occupancy. So that, that use category is whereby residential has to be on the second and third floor. The one above it that I was talking earlier about, it's a slight variation, but it does have to have a commercial component, which is at least thirty five percent of the total footprint area. The residential could be by itself, but it also could be on top of some other commercial. But that's more of a site issue as you look at the ratios, but that's, that's it. We don't have a standalone residential use on the ground floor all, all by itself without commercial.
And in the case where there's multiple buildings, the building on the street is always the commercial and has commercial on the first floor and the, um, additional building or buildings behind are the ones that can be residential on all floors?
Doesn't actually, um, doesn't, doesn't specify that.
Yeah, that's, that's the language that I was, uh, referring to and, uh, it's been removed.
Right.
So we stepped away from that from, so that was on the twenty nineteen recommendation. And because of essentially the complexity of primary, secondary building, who comes first, who comes second? We're not touching. The, the decision was to leave the existing language as is. And leave it up to the, the board if one of these type of projects came forward as far as positioning go. Um, the only positioning that, um, is part of it is that bill to line, so.
I, I believe the design guidelines would help in that regard as well.
I, I believe the design guidelines would help in that regard as well.
All right, uh, we've had a chance to revisit that issue. Anyone in the audience care to ask another question or, or shall we move on?
Go to the next, uh.
See any hands, Betsy?
I am not seeing any hands, Walter.
Very good, thank you. Uh, all right, so, uh, next one up, Rich is article, oh, now we'll get into the F five issue, okay?
Yeah, sorry, it's, uh, yeah, so we're out, we've concluded B one related to zoning articles. Um, we're moving on to, uh, accessory. Uh, I'll switch that, I'm going to, uh, excuse me, I'm gonna share a, uh, I put together just a slide presentation with, uh, that all the members have been your packet already, I wanna see where we have here, where's my?
While Rich is, uh, searching for that, happy to report that the Red Sox won their seventh game in a row today. And, uh, and now at the head of the division.
Good to hear.
At head of the Yankees.
Better than you. Just be here with me as I, uh, get to, uh, that screen. Why is it not coming up? One second. There we go, so. We're having on the screen. Well, I think we had originally, uh, been asked by the building department to, to make a small adjustment to the F five A accessory building provisions zoning by law and insert the word setback because it was absent from the zoning by law. But was found as it relates to the by law for, for pools in the accessory provision section. And in the course of time, we, we moved around, um, quite a bit on this particular topic. And what I'm, wanna share with you, and I already shared with the board, that what you see on the screen is, um, the provision, so the bylaws were first adopted in Norfolk in, in nineteen fifty-three. And then in nineteen sixty-eight, represent a significant changes to the zoning by law where, whereby a lot of require, increased requirements came forward. As you see, this is the text, uh, from the nineteen sixty-eight by law. And I highlighted this, uh, section E, which still exists today within the zoning by law. It talks about yard, front, side and rear, unoccupied space. And then, as Bob had said and through me to you, is that he's interpreted the front yard as, um, fifty feet, so it's a fifty-foot setback off the street. And this diagram would still exist today in the zoning by law. In a picture form represents required yards, side yards, what through lots look like, what corner lots look like. So his words to me, his interpretation has been consistent with the intent and of, as it relates to front yard, as relates to zoning bylaws. And then in nineteen ninety, nineteen eighty-nine, pulled out from town meeting report. As you see, the same subject matter to a degree was a discussion at town meeting in nineteen eighty-nine about adding the word required in there. And then here you could read for yourself what it says as it relates to, um, the planning board recommendation and definitely postpone. And so now we arrive at twenty twenty-one. And I'm gonna go through these, just, these are pictures around the town of Norfolk. And this, this lady was gracious enough to invite me onto her property. And it's not too far away from town hall. And she asked me, what are you taking pictures of? I said, well, let me tell you what I'm taking pictures about. The planning board has before them a zoning amendment to F five A, which deals with accessory buildings. Whereby they would be prohibited in the required front yard. And there's a consideration to allow it by special permit between fifty and twenty feet from the front yard setback. Now, this particular house here on Castle Road is a corner lot. They put in a beautiful swimming pool, though I can't see because it's a fence, I didn't peep over the fence. But you can see this shed right here where the cursor is would be considered the front yard of Meeting House Road. Okay, and see, she's waving to me and she's happy because I'm not trying to further impact her with this proposal. I'm proposing, at least to the board. So I explained to her what the, perhaps where this might end up. And so that, if this changes went forward, this shed that is acting as a shed, but also adjacent to her pool, which is behind this fence, is in a front yard now and it's in the front plane of this corner of the house because it's on the corner lot. Well, you know what that means? It's a special permit. And would require her to go to the Board of Appeals. This garage that exists on Union Street, as you can see, is in the front yard.
Rich, if I could jump in real quick.
Yep.
But I'm not quite sure what we're, you're going through this because you're proposing we change the language in the article?
I am. Okay.
Thank you.
That's where I'm going. Thank you for asking, yeah. I should have said that in the beginning.
Another, I guess, just for clarity now that I'm, now that I've interrupted already. And the changes to this language would be allowed because you're proposing that they be less restrictive rather than more restrictive?
What I'm proposing is to codify what's been interpreted since nineteen sixty-eight as it relates to accessory buildings in quote-unquote the front yard.
Right, but how can we change the language in the warrant? We, we had a conversation earlier tonight that we couldn't change it because it's already printed and.
Well, we got, we got a, uh, a, uh.
Yes, so town council, what town council opine on is you could make it less restrictive, you can make it more restrictive. So right now, the way the proposal language is, it's more restrictive. So under the scenario, which you see before you, this photograph, if somebody tried to do this after town meeting, May eighth, that would require them to get a special permit to put this shed right here because it's in, it's in front of the house.
Right, so I'm, I'm sorry, but now that I've totally taken you out of your presentation, I mean, why are we having this conversation?
Why we're having the conversation is to allow folks to be able to put, if they want to put an accessory, see this, this shed here?
I, I get it, but is, is this for the planning board or is this for the public? I mean, we voted on this as the planning board in our last meeting, right?
Yeah, you did. This is for the public that I'm trying to help, that isn't, isn't aware potentially what the outcome will be to them if you go forward with the change as is.
And I believe that the language that Rich is going to propose is different than what we voted on, Aaron.
It's true. That is true.
I'll be quiet.
All right. Again, garage, that garage there, maybe you don't like it, whatever. It's in, that would require a special permit under the present proposal by the planning board that's been contemplated. Uh, carriage house in front of another house, Cleveland Street, special permit. That shed over there, special permit. This shed over here, special permit. That shed over there, special permit. And I'll stop there. I don't have to go through all these. It is that I understand there's some extreme situations I think people are concerned about. However, in, in context of trying to address them from a regulatory standpoint, you're putting people who would put a accessory building in the front plane, which technically is off to their side, would have to go for a special permit, so they have to go through a hearing process. They very well likely will have to have a survey plan done, have to pay an application fee, get a decision, then record it. So from administrative standpoint, if you wanted to put that shed, that might be two thousand dollars. You could end up spending a thousand dollars in permanent for a two thousand dollar shed. So it's really more to beware or just alert you to the potential impact of making this change. What I'm suggesting is that in those special cases, which also is brought forward with small lots that have constricting issues with parts slope, topography, smaller lots in general, they have a way to go get a special permit. But for somebody who has a larger lot that can put a, a accessory building greater than fifty feet back off the road, they should be able to do it. Me.
And therefore, the language that you're proposing looks like what?
I'll show, I'll share in a second. So. Let me just. Let this. I need to get to my folder, sorry. So this is what's proposed, um, which, to clarify that new accessory building should be closer in principle building or a law line equal to distance, the height struck accessory building. I would strike this out because you would allow something to be in the front yard. And then add the proviso that if you want to go closer, um, to the front property line, it's via a special permit, but no closer than twenty feet.
Now, have you had an opportunity to discuss this with the, uh, bu- building commission?
I had the opportunity to, I actually drafted with the assistant building.
Th- this language?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, all right.
And he's, and, and, you know, principal, you know, to be told, uh, he was the one that really was the one that first approached me about trying to clarify this, so.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why I sat down with him, we drafted up some alternative language.
All right, so, so what this says is that, uh, someone wishes to put a, a garage or a shed in the front yard. As long as it's within, uh, beyond twenty feet from the, from the property line, they can get it done through a special permit via the ZBA.
Correct. Now, just so we, and we did talk about this.
Yeah.
It's, so from fifty feet up to the front plane of the house, they could put it in there without any additional permitting.
That doesn't, yeah, but where does it say that?
I know it, I know it doesn't say that, so.
Does, I mean, I don't, I don't, this, we looked at this language a month ago when we had this conversation and voted on it. This is no different than what we looked at. I don't understand what's.
It's not much different. I understand that. My, my only point to you is that that I think you, you can vote this. I will say that I think the outcome is going to be a, a, a high negative ripple effect on people when they want to put a shed in a quote-unquote their side yard, but it's in the, in the front plane of their house. We're gonna send them to the ZBA and then spend a thousand dollars for a two thousand dollar shed. That's, I mean, I think, I think that's not a really good use of a regulatory scheme that people would have to go through for that type of use.
Well, in that case, why are you proposing?
I'm not. The present language of the planning board would require that because you're, because right now the present language is this, I'll show you. Um, I'll go to the, uh.
But I, what I, what I'm failing to see, Rich, is, is how, I mean, we voted on this last week, so presumably you thought it was a good idea. I don't see the new information being presented to us this week that would make us change the, or month. I don't see any new information being presented to us that we've changed the conversation from a month ago. Unless I'm missing something. It feels to me like we're just trying again. Which, if that's what it is, then so be it. But I'm looking, I'm looking for new information and I'm not seeing.
I'm looking, no, I'm trying again. I'm quite frankly changing again. And I think if this goes through and the outcome happens the way it could very well go, as we discussed at the staff level, I will say to people, I will direct them and say, listen, this is the outcome of it. So you're trying to over-regulate and this will be the outcome if you want to do this. And just flat out, so when they say, how come I can't do this? I'll say, well, this zoning change is why you're going to go through a special permit process. And if you want to put that garage in the front of your house, but further back than fifty feet off the street, you're gonna need to go through a special permit process. And that's fine, we'll just have to, I just want the board to be aware, there is a ripple effect, the outcome of going this way and that, and that's the only, I'm just giving examples how, with the outcome will very well be. And if.
Well, if, 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 in fact, you're uncomfortable with the fact that you're requiring them to go in front of the ZBA and get a special permit, what alternative language would you propose to, to avoid that event eventually?
So we were, what complicated this topic was that we were trying to address one item, which was clarifying the front, the minimum front yard setback, which is in the first clause of this section here, okay? And as I went out and spoke to the ZBA, and then you heard from the former chairman of the ZBA, and he's written before, his concern was that there are folks that have smaller lots, that don't have generous front yards, and now there is no vehicle for them to, to, to come into compliance with the zoning by law. They either, what would they need to do or they go for variance? And then, so if you're sending people down a variance path, you have to kind of question yourself, what are we doing? Is what, you know, is this by law? Does it make sense? Should we attack it differently? So we tried to address two things in one article. The building department standpoint, the way they started this would be happy with that one word, setback, right there, you see in the first clause?
Yep.
And forget about this, if anybody tries to put any accessory building between the front property line and fifty foot back, they would say, look, you can't do it. You gotta go to the ZBA. Okay, but we're trying to accomplish a few different things in one change. And maybe that's overloaded and it's complicated the issue, but that's, that's what we're trying to do. And what I'm suggest, what I'm pointing to you is, they feel, and if you look at the by law, that the way they've interpreted it, it does have merits, it makes sense. You may not love it, but it shows in a diagram what the required yards are. It illustrates a front, side, three lot, so that's how they've, they've gone off of that. Now, people might, and they disagree with that interpretation from the building department, but it's a reasonable conclusion based on what the by law has in it.
And so what's the, uh, former chairman of the ZBA's objection to, to just adding the word setback and letting it go? And so what's the former chairman of the ZBA's objection to to just adding the word setback and letting it go with that?
His objection is that you're not giving people in the situations where you have the smaller lots, you don't have 30,000 square feet, you know, think about the first lots created in this town were much smaller. The lot requirements that are much larger today came into effect in 1953. Okay. Excuse me, not even 1953. They came in 1968. 1953 was 15,000 square feet. There are people that live in and thrive in Norfolk on much smaller lots. But if they if time comes along, they want to add an accessory building in the front. They 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 can't do it. They go for variance. And so the chairman was trying to give them an option to be able to lawfully come in and have the them evaluated on a case by case.
Well, what's the difference in terms of the process between applying for a variance and and applying for a special permit in front of the ZBA?
The difference is that a variance is a much higher bar. So it has to be related to the shape, topography, the land, soil conditions. The standard for the ZBA to make a finding to grant some of the variance is much higher.
Okay.
Special permit gives them more leadway to take consideration the existing neighborhood, you know, where it's located, the surrounding impacts to do it, and they could make a finding and say, you know what? This is okay, you know?
The ZBA has the has the authority to waive any fees that they require for applying for a special permit, do they not?
The one fee they can have flexibility is the filing fee.
Yeah.
So let's say they waive it to $25, okay? You still have to have an ad that goes in the paper that's going to cost you $275. You're going to have to record a decision, which is at least it's a hundred dollars a page these days at the registry. So there's $300 there. And then more likely or not, you're going to have to have a surveyor prepare a plan if it's not readily available to them. So we couldn't necessarily, you might not necessarily be able to use a a plot plan that they have. So there's this added layer of cost to it. I'm just these are the real issues that we get on the phone, and I'm just trying to share with you the calls that come into the between my office and next door when we talk about this topic.
And you think the best solution to this is is the language that you're proposing here?
Well, it's the best. It's better.
Well, it's the best you can come you and the building department can come up with.
Best I could come up with.
Right.
Beyond doing this, I think the work, you know, and we do, and we have people hanging in the balance, quote unquote, because we have two people who were issued enforcement letters about accessory. And these not, these are not accessory, you know? Yes, under the letter of the law, they're buildings, but they're 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 huts. Okay. So yes, they're not the end of the world. To them, it's a big deal. They have to be moved, but but then we have real issues as far as I shouldn't say real, but a little bit more complicated where there are actually real buildings that could necessitate a variance as opposed to special permit. But I'm just, you know.
Yeah, all right. Is the language that you're proposing here that we're now looking at on the screen less restrictive in your judgment than the previous language?
It is. It is.
Yeah, that's what I thought too. Okay.
But it but it also changes the distance requirements.
Yes, it does.
Right. So it it changes more than more than just special permit to.
Yeah, yeah, but.
It does, but you did have the same dimensional issue in the present language on the warrant. So.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just that what you see on the screen before you, it was everything is special permit from 20 feet up to up to the principal building.
So in a in a world where, you know, the article we voted on last month is being questioned, why don't we just recommend that both articles be removed from the warrant?
I don't think we should do that. I mean, we've we've spent an awful lot of time on this issue. We ought to make a recommendation and move forward on it. If it if it turns out to be wrong, we'll we'll not wrong, but need further clarification. We'll vote on it again in the fall and then put it through. That's my view. Anyway, I don't know about the rest of you. Chad?
I do think Aaron, I think where Aaron's heading with this, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but you know, if if we're not clear, if this is right, and if this isn't, I'm putting our best foot forward, maybe we should put this, you know, pull this off and rework it.
Well, I think it has been reworked between the the people who raised the issue, which is the building department and and our town planner as recently as probably today, and the language that they're proposing is is what they think is the right solution to it.
But it doesn't. But what we're hearing is is that the goal is to change it from a zoning variance to a special permit request, which the language doesn't speak to. And we're hearing and the language speaks to a dimensional change, which we haven't talked about, and we didn't agree on last month. So I I don't I don't think we're we're making headway.
So the just to clarify, the 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 language that's on the screen is what's proposed. It does speak to the special permit. The difference between what I just showed you that I proposed is that right now, what's on the screen is if you want to do this, if you want to do it, put an accessory building from the principal building down or however you all look at to 20 feet, if this goes through, it will be a special permit process. As as that's written, the slight the change, I mean, I'm not going to call it slight.
I don't. I mean, it says zoning board of appeals.
That's yeah, that's what we voted on last month.
Right. And this this one I have before on the screen says the same thing in terms of who you go to. It's a special permit to the zoning board of appeals. It's just that you're not going to them if you're 50 feet up to the front plane of the principal building. You're only going if you're between 50 and 20 feet. And I had this exact so this is the deja vu conversation that I had with today that because it doesn't reference this specifically in there, I think you're going to be not comfortable, right? Or confused. There's not clarity. So I don't want to I rather revise it and come back than try to implement it and then change it because I don't know. There's there's three, like I said, there's three.
Well, I mean, I just, there's no clarity to me this evening as to what is being presented is what's being requested. And I I don't, I'm not finding consistency with consistency with what's being said and what's being written. So I don't I don't know how I could possibly vote to change what's there. And if we feel strongly that what's there is not the best thing to put forward, then my recommendation is is that we we remove the two articles from the war.
Gary?
I was gonna say Blythe has had her hand up for a while.
Hi, everyone. I don't just asking where we where you stand, Rich, on this being reviewed by town council. I mean, we're going supposed to go to advisory tomorrow night for them to take their final vote on it. And we're finalizing the warrant we sign next Tuesday. So I I agree, we got to get it right. I'm a little concerned that we are really out of time to get that right and get it through everybody. I fully appreciate what it might mean to some people who got projects that they're trying to get done. Yeah.
So as it relates to town council, he hasn't. So he hasn't seen this. I just drafted it this afternoon. However, this reading through Peter's response back about what you can change and not change as relates to articles that are proposed and put on the warrant and posted for public hearing. This change would make it less restrictive than what's being proposed. So he he might again, it's up to him and Jay. They might say you can't even do this proposed change. But at least from their guidance, it's not more restrictive. So.
Yeah, whether it stays on or off is not up to me. It's just concerning to me that we're changing it with less than a week to go. So.
All right. So we've got to make a decision here. Would you put up the 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 new proposed language that you you've got to put it up on the screen? Now, in the course of conversation over the last few minutes, you said that this language would allow by right, I I believe anything from 50 feet to the front of the building, front of the principal building of the house.
Correct.
By right.
Yes.
Where does it say that?
It doesn't. It's the application of zoning by law.
And and it's so that's purely by practice by the building inspector, right? But not in not in written language.
Correct.
Well, that seems to be something that that ought to be corrected if it's if it's a practice that is acceptable to the the pardon me, the zoning enforcement officers slash building inspector, it ought to be codified, put in here in writing.
Right. So John raises his hand.
Hey, Rich. Rich, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, everyone. Good. Good evening. I'm I'm John Ackley. I'm the assistant building inspector. I do also live in town. I Rich is right. I was working on this with him today, and I just want to kind of speak to that concern that you just mentioned, Walter, that it doesn't actually it doesn't actually say by right, you can put an accessory building in the front yard. But I would, I guess I would liken that to to kind of any any setback. It doesn't a setback doesn't say you where you can build a a house, a structure. It says specifically where it's prohibited. And that's really what this this by law does as written. It dictates where an accessory structure can't go specifically and where it can't where it can go by special permit. So I think kind of to to answer your your question, it it everything that's needed to apply this i- is in this by law as written by by specifically, you know, telling you where where an accessory structure can't go. Thanks.
Thank you, John. All right. With that comment, how do board members feel about voting on this at this point? Should we vote on it? Or should we follow Aaron's suggestion and pull it? Well, let's start with Chad.
I'm I'm with Aaron. I I think this I think we pull it.
Gary?
I guess we're pulling it because we won't be able to vote if there's only four members and two members already want to pull it.
Yeah, all right. Then the chair will entertain a motion to to extract this article from our recommendation to be included in the warrant.
Walter, before you make a motion, Kristen Balash has a question.
Yeah, it's it's. Yeah, it's a moot now. Never mind.
Okay, thanks, Kristen.
All right. So we I'm sorry, we got interrupted. I'm I'm where we are. Did we make that motion?
No, so moved. Seconded.
All right, we have a motion and spin seconded to remove this article from those that we proposed to have the selectmen include in the warrant. Any further discussion of this before we vote? Very well. Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Mr. Searle?
Hi.
Mr. Peck?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, pull it. Okay, Rich, move on, please.
Just going to scroll a little bit further down to, I believe it's article.
25?
On the warrant, it's 31.
What about 25, the swimming pool?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make the same motion because it's the same conversation. I assumed they were together. Apologies apologies for not.
No, that's
Let's look at the language, please, Rich.
Sure, yeah. See article. Article 5. So in this particular change, this would actually make it more restrictive than it presently is written. So as it relates to swimming pools, you can put them in between the principal building and the front yard setback. What this proposed change does is requires it through a special permit process.
That's playing with that language is pretty clear, and it's one that we voted on a while back. And do we have any comments or questions from board members?
I I don't understand how this is different than the one above. It puts you through the same it's the same zoning board of appeals process instead of a special permit process. Do we feel differently about swimming pools than we do about sheds?
No, I guess if you as you just think back to what Jonathan, how he described how we you interpret the the building code, excuse me, not the building code. The zoning bylaws right now, somebody could, and they already have, there are pools that are in front yards of at homes in the town Norfolk that have gone in because the the by law does allow it. This proposed change was since we 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 got on to the topic about accessory buildings. It didn't seem from a regulatory standpoint to have somebody put a front, a pool in their front yard between 50 feet and the front of their house. But yet you couldn't put a shed. I would think there's a probably better case to be made. A pool could be more of a nuisance than a small shed. So we try to create some consistency with it. So that's what this is proposing to do. If if this doesn't go through, then somebody can come in and put it in their front yard, and we have them because there are through lots. There are lots that are on corners. There are different situations in town readily where there are pools in quote unquote, as we define dimensional and right required setbacks in the front yard. So they don't this would make it more restrictive if it was enacted. If it's not, somebody comes in after this, they could just put it in.
I would make a motion to take this or remove this article as well, so that it can be considered in concert with the previous article which we removed.
Second. Okay, motions on the floor and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, then we're voting on the motion to remove this article from the the recommendation we make to the board of selectmen to include this in the warrant. Mr. Peck?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Searle?
Aye.
Our chair votes aye. Now, before we move on to the next one, I would like to make a recommendation here that we get all parties on a Zoom call in the near future. And Rich can arrange this, and we all tackle this at the same time. Because part of what's been happening is there's been piecemeal discussion between two or three people here and another two or three people over there, and then they bring that to another group. And there's questions, and it never gets resolved because we can all get cannot all get together and discuss it at the same time. Okay, Rich, will we go on, please?
So the next zoning article is Article 31, which is by citizen petition to modify the inclusionary by law. What's before you, the changes, the highlight. In blue is new language and the strike through language is as is strike through, and Peter's the the main sponsor, I think, is representing petitions. I'm sure we'll speak, we'll speak to this bylaw, so I will defer to him.
Yeah, Peter, please.
Hi, Walter. Good evening, everybody. My name's Peter Diamond. I'm a Norfolk resident. I live on Secoak Street. I've lived in town for my whole life. I have before you this citizens petition to make a change in the Affordable Housing Development Section H three of our zoning bylaws, which is known as the Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw. I did have a PowerPoint presentation, and I was hoping that I could present that to the board. Would you allow me to share my screen, Rich?
Peter, I think that's okay, but
Minutes on.
It is, it is ten thirty, so I hope it's not too long. How many slides is it?
That's about ten minutes long.
Okay, go go for it.
So I think
Make him, I can make him host so he can share.
Okay.
Okay, Peter, you should be host now.
All right, so here we go. Well, this is my PowerPoint presentation. It was to be Article thirty-one, but given that you just eliminated two articles, I guess I'll be Article twenty-nine. And Article thirty-one for the Norfolk Annual Spring Town Meeting, May eighth, which is a Saturday. So hopefully we have a good turnout. The Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw, Section H three. What is the Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw? The Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw provides for an affordable housing assessment on new residential development. The town of Norfolk's Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw currently assesses new residential development at ten percent of a development with ten or more dwelling units. So a development with ten dwelling units will provide one affordable housing unit, and a development with twenty dwelling units would provide two affordable dwelling units. The idea behind the ten percent assessment is to keep pace with the state requirement that each town have ten percent of its total housing units be affordable to people with low and moderate incomes. What is affordable housing? Affordable housing is housing that is made available to families with incomes at eighty percent of the median income for the area. The median income for the town of Norfolk is around one hundred forty-three thousand dollars. The state averages the median income for the area in Norfolk County, this is approximately a hundred six thousand dollars. To be eligible for affordable housing unit in the town of Norfolk, the income is based on the following table. So, excuse me, in this table, those amounts you see are the maximum that a one-person household could earn to be eligible for an affordable unit in the town of Norfolk. And it goes up with two-person, three-person, four-person, and so forth. So who benefits from affordable housing? All citizens in the community would benefit from affordable housing. Some examples of families that qualify for affordable housing are our teachers, our police and firemen, DPW workers, and any of our town employees, as well as families that work in other areas of employment in or out of our community. The cost of purchasing a home in Norfolk is approximately four hundred thousand dollars or more in the current housing market. The cost of purchasing an affordable home in the town of Norfolk is approximately a hundred eighty thousand to two hundred forty thousand. The cost of affordable one-bedroom apartment in the area is approximately sixteen hundred fifty dollars. What is the purpose of the petition to change the Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw? Lowering the current threshold of the Affordable Housing Assessment from ten dwelling units to six dwelling units. And as I stated earlier, this is a townwide application to increase the current ten percent Affordable Housing Assessment on residential development in the town of Norfolk. Increasing the Affordable Housing Assessment in a stepped assessment based on the total dwelling units in a project as shown in this table. So if there's six to twelve units in the project, ten percent would be affordable, thirteen to nineteen at fifteen percent, and twenty plus at twenty percent. Why is there a need to change the current Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw? Our current Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw that is calculated at ten percent of a new development with ten or more units is not keeping pace with the state minimum requirement requirement that each town or city have ten percent affordable housing within the community. Many developers have built nine-unit developments to circumvent the ten percent Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw. For example, Nichols Way off Holbrook Street has nine one-family dwellings. Ariana Lane off Myrtle Street has nine one-family dwellings. And Fredericksen Road along with Oakfield Trail was developed with nine one-family dwellings. The town of Norfolk loses ground toward our goal of ten percent affordable housing when developers avoid the Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw. Norfolk is in the process of increasing the density of our housing in our downtown B one district to sixteen units per acre, which may double our housing downtown. The proposed increase in the Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw Assessment will provide housing choices for people of all means. The southward property of eighty-six acres has been sold, and it is unclear if high-density housing will be planned for that property. What else does the petition propose to change? The current Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw drops fractions of a development's Affordable Housing Unit Assessment within the ten percent calculation as written. The proposed change adds language for fractions of the assessment. Fractional unit of oh point five or more shall be rounded up to the next whole unit. So that's the second part of the petition to change. An example of how this would apply to a new development in Norfolk. The proposed development at Seven Hill Street has a total of eighteen new dwelling units. Eighteen units times ten percent under the current zoning bylaw would equal one point eight units, and the point oh eight is dropped. The total assessment is one affordable housing unit. As proposed in the petition, the eighteen units times fifteen percent would equal two point seven units, and the point seven is rounded up to three, so the total assessment would be three affordable housing units. This fractional unit change will be advantageous for increasing our affordable housing inventory. Without this change, eight dwelling units are added to the Norfolk's total inventory without assessment. More examples of Norfolk losing ground towards ten percent affordable housing inventory. Recent and proposed Valley Street, Hill Street area housing. There were four units developed at eighteen to twenty-four Valley Street with no affordable housing units. There were eight units of housing at twenty-seven to forty-one Valley Street with no affordable housing units. That's eighteen proposed units at Seven Hill Street with only one affordable housing unit, and all this is under the current Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw. So this amounts to a total of thirty housing units with only one affordable housing unit under the current Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw. The one unit affordable covers ten units at ten percent, and twenty units have no assessment at all. Under the proposed Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw change, there would have been four affordable housing units as one would have come from the eight units at twenty-seven to forty-one Valley Street, and three affordable housing units would have come from Seven Hill Street. This would be equivalent to a thirteen point three percent assessment overall. Norway Farms off Midway Street has fourteen dwelling units, and under the current Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw, only one unit was assessed. Under the proposed Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw, two affordable housings would have been assessed. Would have been fourteen times fifteen percent, which would equal two point one, because the point one is under oh point five. You would drop the point one. So this is just the changes in the zoning article, which I believe you already have on the petition in Article thirty-one. The yellow is existing text. The white is text to be stricken from the H three. Part of the Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw, and the blue is the new text, including the table here. And here's where we get rid of the ten percent, and we say in accordance with the Affordable Housing Units as set forth in Section H three B, which was right here. So the developer would have to follow the new table. And further down here, you can see where we put the fractional units, a fractional unit of below point oh five would be dropped. The schedule below is to be completely removed. The yellow text stays. And I didn't feel it was necessary to keep the language in the parentheses here. End of the proposed changes, town of Norfolk's Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw. This petition of the proposed changes to the town of Norfolk's Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw, Section H three, helps Norfolk to better keep pace with the state of Massachusetts requirement that a minimum of ten percent of a community's overall housing units be affordable. Please support Article thirty-one at the Norfolk Annual Town Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Before we turn it over to questions from the board and from the audience, anything else you'd like to add, Peter?
Not at this, not right now, no, Walter.
Okay, well, thanks, Peter. All right, questions from the board members, please? Comments?
Peter, where did you come up with starting with six? I mean, why not start with, why not start with five?
I looked at some area towns, for example, Midfield started at six. There's a few other communities that start lower. Generally, I look to the town of Midfield for some guidance in their zoning bylaw. They have a bit more aggressive numbers for their percentage from six to twelve. I think they go at fifteen percent, and then they step up to twenty percent and further on to twenty-five percent. So I I elected to do an assessment that was not as aggressive as Midfield, but I liked the starting point of six. And I saw a lot of development in our own town that circumvented the ten by doing nine-unit developments.
If I could jump in there to add some math to Peter's response, Chad. If you notice in in Peter's presentation, there was a five-tenths round down scenario or five-tenths drop the unit scenario. Right? So at five units, you're at five tenths, so you'd round down. There'd be no affordable units. Once you get to six units, you round up, and you'd have one affordable unit. So at the the six, the number six comes from the math.
Yeah. Gary, any question? Comments?
No, I was, I'm all for increasing to some degree above the ten percent.
Understood. Okay, I see one hand raised in the audience from Susan. Before we turn Susan loose here, Betsy, how many hands do we have raised?
She was just so.
Okay, Sue, you're on.
Okay, I just wanted to let the board know that the new income limits were just released, so they are a bit higher than what you saw on the screen. And I'm bringing that to your attention simply because I am about to roll out and have started the advertising for the enclave, and so if you saw a different number than what was reflected, the numbers came out after Peter put this presentation together, so I just wanted you to be aware of that. And Peter, could you go to the second to last page? I I saw something in there regarding a two-family, a home that looks like a single family from the outside, but can be a two-family?
I can no longer share my screen. I should be able to show it in in the the warrant. If Rich can go to the warrant.
Oh, okay.
Sounds like something that we removed the
That's what I'm thinking, Gary, but I I just want to make sure that it I it's it didn't stay the same in this.
All right, let me just hold on. Lost my
We lost five people, too. We're down to twenty. I can't tell about the ten that have blacked out as well.
How many affordable houses is that?
Two point five. We round up to three.
So where'd you see that?
So it was on the on the second, his last present, not his last page, the page right before it.
The one with the large paragraph?
Yes.
It's in H three E two of the zoning bylaw.
Oh, yeah.
I'll read it while Rich is trying to find it. Says if only a single affordable unit is required, the second unit in a two-family home may be the market rate unit. Is that what we're talking about, Sue?
No, it said a two-family home that looks like a a single-family home.
That's the first sentence there, Peter. H three E two, right, may be provided within a two-family home designed to appear as a single-family home whose exterior appearance, including a single driveway and common entryways, and architecture is compatible with that of other houses within the subdivision.
So correct me if I'm wrong, Rich, but didn't we remove that because?
We did too, Sue.
We found out from DHCD it wouldn't be counted.
Right, plus even before that ruling, we had a a proposal for Cranberry Heights off Florence Street, and they were proposing to do that, and we just couldn't make it work. It didn't look like the houses
Right.
One of the requirements.
Right.
Well, just to to add on to that conversation, the the compensation for removing that was the adoption of allowing the buyout scenario where the developer could make a contribution to the to the housing funds rather than actually provide the housing.
Right, a payment in lieu of, yes.
Yeah, so my screen's back, so I can hopefully get back to it.
Page forty-seven of sixty-nine.
Yeah, it's just before you go to the plans.
I had to put on the strong sheeters to read that, Rich. Read that little print.
Yeah, hold on.
We need Dr. Fauci at this point.
To make us some coffee.
All right, so what page again? All right, so what page again, sorry?
Forty six, seven of sixty nine.
You can just type forty seven in the upper left corner. Should be able to. No.
Or you could scroll.
You're not really.
There you are.
There you go.
Am I really?
I can't read it.
First, it's the first sentence of the second paragraph.
There you go, okay. Center it and we're good.
All right, so H three E two.
Well, I I'm pretty sure we removed it either at last fall or last spring town meeting, so that that needs to get.
Correct.
Corrected.
Yeah.
Because it's not accurately represented.
Yeah, so.
I mean, because technically it makes the citizen's petition null and void because it's not correct language. Because we don't want to put that back in.
Um I I I'm not sure I would ask Blythe maybe to talk to that, but I'm not sure it makes it. Null and void.
No, I don't either, but.
Well, but or but it would put it back in that we don't want.
But again, you could you could make a friendly amendment, right? Peter presents it, he could present it with a friendly amendment.
Yeah, and uh.
We can. Okay. Let's uh.
So Susan, what before you before you uh, any other comments on your part, Susan?
No, that that was it, just those two items.
How about the Affordable Housing Trust? How do they feel about the citizen petition? Any comments from them?
Chairman Cleverden has his hand raised.
Ah, very good. Tom.
Thanks, Walter. Uh, yes, we had uh the presentation by Peter, I think it was two weeks ago. And we see in in general that it looks very good as far as we're concerned, because our goal, as you know, is to reach the ten percent level in town. Uh, so we like it, there might be one or two glitches that we're going to discuss next. I think it's a week from tomorrow, uh as well as tonight's discussions, but I did have a question I'd like to. Um, I'd like to challenge Mr. Hunt's math if I could um through Mr. Diamond. I think that zero point five meant we rounded up, didn't it, Peter? Isn't that what you were looking for?
Anything more than. Uh, zero point five, so point six, point seven, point eight, and round up to a whole unit.
Gotcha, so at zero point five, it would be rounded down.
Correct.
Mr. Hunt, you are correct. Thank you so much. Thought I had you here.
Like to just uh offer, uh this is not my personal view, but I'd like to offer two comments I have heard from uh developers. Regarding the citizens petition, one is a fellow named Al Quaglieri who has Seven Hill Street. And uh his his comment was, well, if if this by law goes through. Um, I will pull my development and and reposition it as a forty B. I said, oh, okay, well, I understand where you're coming from. And then the other one is a is a email that uh came in today to uh. Mr. McCarthy from a developer named Tom DePlacido. And I'll read a couple of paragraphs from it, private warrant article. For affordable housing does not help the town to locally grow affordable housing at all. In fact, it forces a developer to move. Forward with a forty B application, thereby removing the uncertainty of applying for a special permit or subdivision on the local zoning. At least with a forty B, there's an increase in density to offset the soft and hard cost of creating affordable housing. Why would an application be filed for twenty units at a twenty percent local affordability requirement? Even be an option when a forty B application for fifty plus units could be filed in the same property with a twenty five percent affordability requirement. And all of the local regulations could be waived. Furthermore, this could have the opposite impact of a for on affordable housing by creating larger lots. With the more expensive houses, a six, seven, or eight. Lot subdivision would not be an option. Why build an eight lot subdivision when there is significant loss in the eighth lot? Just build on five oversized lots and charge a premium. In reality, this is undermining the creation of affordable housing, not helping to create it. So uh it that comment I just thought was useful to pass along so that you know where the developers are coming from, that's all.
Uh Walter, I think it's worth speaking to that a little bit too, right? I mean, we we just touched on this a few minutes ago. Uh, you know, and and an eight development lot could still put up eight houses if they did their payment in lieu, so.
Yeah, that's true, yep, yep.
I think Hill Street sold too, by the way. Just FYI.
It's under agreement. Yeah, it's not sold yet. I think, you know, I will. You know, make the point again about this particular provision, and I understand that uh. It does. This petition does conflict with what you earlier had recommended as it relates to affordable housing. In the B one zone. And I, while I think, you know, improving affordability is is a is part of the is part of the. Objective, I think the concern still let rests with the fact that. Affordable housing or the the type of development that's going to happen in the B one. Zone has a commercial component to it, so it's not. In the same category as some of the townwide developments that you're that are being contemplated with this. Petition where they are strictly residential development, so. It's it's potentially concerning that it could have the dampening cooling effect on the objectives of trying to create. Uh mixed use development opportunities in Norfolk Center. Um, where it's not, it's not. It's a potential practical reality from a profit and loss standpoint that it very well could turn out not to be. Advantageous to try to develop mixed use development in the B one. Um, so. I'm not necessarily saying that we're going to end up with more affordable housing, but we may end up damping the whole. Uh, goal of creating mixed use opportunity. As it relates to the B one zoning because of layering a much. More aggressive affordable component through the whole process with the B one. Up until, as I mentioned to you earlier, to January, we're at fifteen percent. That was where the recommendation was, and it shifted in the last month and a half. Up to this scaled approach upwards of now twenty or more going to twenty percent. So I think it in some, I think it's going to come down to a mathematical equation as it relates to the B one zone if this goes forward. And I think it's going to have that chilling effect, and that's just. That's a potential real outcome. It's not, it's not to be discussed in terms of being threatening or not. I think it's a, it's a real issue. Um, because. Ground up development is not inexpensive proposition and. As it relates to the B one, we don't have a a payment and lieu option for rental. Um, so that will be incorporated into development, so that adds another layer of potential complexity. That doesn't exist unless it's ten or more. We saw a real nice project next door to Town Hall, which um. We might not see, we might, but we might not, so it's just um, I think it's important to be aware of that. And in context of this petition, as I mentioned with the housing trust before. You know, there's an article before town meeting to do a housing production plan. Um, whereby a lot of these issues you could. You know, get more input from the professionals in this, particularly in this one topic, to then advise the town how to proceed. And once you, once you move forward and this goes forward and it does get adopted. If there's been errors made and it does have that negative outcome. Then it can be more challenging to unravel that, so it's just, that's the. Just want people to be aware of it, and I know there's a twenty percent provision in Medfield. Um, but we're not Medfield in terms of Medfield doesn't allow mixed use in their downtown. The planners, like, it's on a goal and objective to add for mixed use in Medford, in Medfield Center, but it does, it's not allowable. So what you see mixed use in Medford, Medfield Center is older developments that predate. The zoning they have today there, so to compare, it needs to be apples in terms of apples as relates to the B one. So I want people to be aware of it. As relates, Walpole, they have nothing right now.
Rich, let me, let me jump in on that and offer a few thoughts. Right, first of all, I think we have to separate the B one district from the rest of town. And I and I'll, and I'll. Speak to the rest of town simply in that, I I don't think we, anyone would argue that we're losing ground on affordable housing in terms of our percentages, in terms of developments in town. I think Mr. Diamond made that perfectly obvious in his presentation, so to. To adopt this kind of a step scenario for the rest of town, I think makes a lot of uh common sense. Uh, I think the timing related to the B one district and conversations is a bit unfortunate. Um, but you know, that's that's something that we can deal with, and in terms of the B one district, uh again, I'll go back to math. Um, we talked earlier about how there's twenty seven properties in in the inner core. Eight, eight of those properties have the potential to have less than ten residential units on them, so we, you're talking about. A third of the properties that are actually impacted by this this discussion. Five of those eight are already developed, so you're talking about three undeveloped properties. That this difference between six and ten impacts. Right, so I would argue that the impacts on the B one district are minimal. Uh, not to mention the fact that uh the fifteen percent number that we originally. Recommended as the B one committee, uh this would actually better that on the larger lots. Uh, and we'd end up, we'd actually end up with more affordable units downtown than we we would have with the original recommendation of fifteen percent. Uh, so I I I think there's a lot of, a lot of merit um to to what's being presented. And I I think it would be in all of our best interests to figure out how to come to an alignment uh between uh. What's good for the town and what's good for the B one district.
Uh, well, those of you who have followed the planning board discussions on on the B one district when it comes to this particular topic. Know that that uh the argument that Rich just put forward is is one that I put forward as well. Um, and in fact, I argued strongly that the affordable uh dimension in town's B one district should remain at ten percent. To uh avoid the negative impact of a lot of forty B housing without commercial development and uh. However, the board does not agree with me and uh the board voted to put the language in uh that you saw earlier. And as the, after we voted, as the chairman of the board, I support what the board, I must support what the board voted. Um, I do think that we run a risk, as Rich pointed out, uh of encouraging forty B in in the. The B one district with the language that we're proposing, but we're going to go forward with it. Now, we need to uh. Move on here, it's getting late and uh we need to. To uh take vote to decide whether we wish to support the citizen petition article at town meeting. So uh I would entertain a motion to that effect and then we can uh discuss it and or and vote on it. So please, a motion to support the the citizen petition article.
Walter, if I might, uh again, it's speaking back to my comments earlier in the meeting tonight, I I think it's difficult to support. Uh, or I think we need to have a discussion about whether we're going to support the article in terms of uh. The potential to change what's in the B one uh district. I I think that's a conversation we need to have.
Of, all right, uh my position is that we should keep the language that we have. Uh, and and uh offer a a friendly amendment on town floor, which would allow us to begin at ten. In the B one district.
You're you're saying modify the citizen petitions so that the B one district was different?
Well, that's true.
I was thinking the same thing, Walter.
And. I I think we need, I think we need to be careful how we're presenting the information to the town in terms of uh. Well, we. Why, why, why is what's best for the town not best for the B one district?
Well, what's best for 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 the B one district? In, you know where I stand on that, so I'm not going to.
Why, why would we invite more dense housing outside of the B one district? Where there's a train station and and mixed use projects.
Because we wish to encourage commercial development and mixed use development within B one, where we don't need to do that outside the B one.
Well, I I see this as we have, we have three options, we either support it. Which means that it's going to provide a more. More affordable housing in the down, in the B one inner core, we don't support it. Or we support with a friendly amendment. I mean, that's how I look at it, there's three choices, unless I'm missing something.
Yeah, my my view, Chad, is that we take that third option and support it and then put a friendly amendment to allow the. B one to start at ten rather than six. Jerry, what do you think?
I think it's a a minor change that only affects a couple parcels in the center of town, and I would be willing to. Make that friendly amendment with you, yes.
Okay. So it sounds like we're willing to. Take a vote to support the citizens amendment, citizen petition, excuse me. And then offer a friendly amendment, uh what we hope would be a friendly amendment, or at least an amendment to allow the B one to start at ten versus six.
Yeah, it's all dependent on how the town votes, right?
That's true, I mean, with the citizen petition, I I'm not sure in which order. The warrant prints it, is it ahead of us or behind us in terms of?
Behind thirty one.
So we're going to get a signal from someone named Calcutt that says it's behind, isn't it?
All right, so it's Article thirty four, right?
Okay.
Okay. The B one's ahead of it.
Yeah, I understand.
But just just understand that we run, we run the risk, right, of. Asking for the friendly amendment amendment it being voted down and then the town adopting the citizen petition, which would then apply the citizen petition to the B one district.
That's true.
Okay.
True, that's true, and but once, once the uh citizens petition is voted on. In that process, we can offer the friendly amendment, which may or may not pass.
Yes, or we can uncomplicate the entire scenario and just support the citizen amendment.
Well, we're supporting a citizen amendment for the rest of the town, we're just attempting to adjust it within the B one district.
Understood.
Okay, all right, so Chair will entertain a motion to support the citizen petition. With an amendment to. Start the B one district at ten versus six.
Well, I I think you just, you just want to exclude the B one district.
Can can we?
Keep the same language, right?
Might I offer that we do two motions, one, we support the citizen petition, and then second, we vote to add a friendly amendment?
Yeah, but perhaps Chad, explain that what you're proposing again?
Well, I I guess you could do it one of two ways, you could. You could modify it, like you said, change, you know, because this friend, this citizen position applies to the whole town, so I guess. I guess it would make the most sense to do. Your friendly amendment with changing the six to the ten for the B one district, I mean, now that I'm thinking about it. I I my original intent was just to say exclude the B one district, but. What, I mean, the other article may not pass either, so. If the other article doesn't pass, I think you, and this one does. I still think we move forward with the the friendly amendment. You following me?
If I could add a piece to, I'm not sure you want to exclude it from the B one district, which is where our town center is. from the B one district, which is where our town center is, where our train station is located. Uh, many people that um come to live in affordable housing or rent an affordable housing are either single-car families or no-car families, so to eliminate it from completely from the downtown area.
I I agree. A- as I was talking it through, I I I think the word exclude is is too too harsh, and I think it's, I think Walter's recommendation of just changing the the starting, starting number from six to ten is the the better amendment.
We could start with a motion, uh which I'll make to support the citizen petition.
Second that motion.
Okay, any further discussion on that? All right, Mr. Searle?
Hi.
Mr. Peck?
Hi.
Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Chair votes aye. All right, now you give us the second one, Aaron.
Uh, I will not give you a second one.
Are you, are you saying you would wait until the vote from the town, Aaron, before we try to make an amendment?
I don't think Aaron supports an amendment.
He doesn't support your amendment.
Uh, but uh, let's see, Chad, maybe you could offer that second uh um motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we that we make a friendly amendment to the citizens petition to change the starting number for affordable housing from six to ten.
Within the B one.
The B one.
Within, I'm, yes, within the B one inner
Core.
The inner core.
Inner core, right, yeah.
Right.
All right, do we have a second?
I will second that.
All right, very good. Uh, so we'll take a vote, uh Mrs. Searle.
Aye.
Mr. Peck?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Uh, Chair votes aye, that one carried. Okay, uh, Rich?
Mr. Diamond has his hand up.
Mr. Diamond has his, where's Mr. Diamond? Go ahead, Peter.
I was hoping there would be discussion before you did the vote. It rolls right over that.
Well.
That's a planning board tactic we use at late meetings.
Yeah. Um, you wish to make a comment, maybe after the fact, but go ahead.
I want to thank you all for your support um for the citizens petition. I think it's best for the town. Like Sue pointed out, the B one district is an ideal location for affordable housing. We have a train there. I don't, I don't agree with changing from six to ten for the downtown. I think we should stay at six. And as far as a friendly amendment, take the language of my petition, we'll stay as is to to the town meeting vote. And and only at that point could there be any um friendly amendment, so I don't understand the vote here. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, all right, uh. Rich, have we reached the end?
You have.
We have, yeah, all right. All right, I want to thank you all for your participation in the uh public hearing on the proposed zoning amendments of for the upcoming town meeting. Do we have other business, Rich, that we need to attend to here before we uh conclude?
No, I think we are, we are, we're able to cover all the topics.
All right, uh, okay, anyone else on the board have anything else they'd like to bring up tonight before we adjourn? Then the Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, wait, wait, don't, don't we need to close the public hearing first?
Uh, yes, 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 thank you for that procedural check. Um, we need a motion to close the public hearing on the proposed zoning amendments.
I moved.
Second.
Uh, all right, all in favor? Uh, let's see, Mr. Searle?
Aye.
Mr. Peck?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. All right, now the Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I moved.
I I think this um might be a good time to uh recognize it's it's Aaron's last meeting.
Uh, so it is, and uh Aaron, thank you very much for your participation, and we're sorry to see you go. Uh, we know you'll make further contributions to the town, and uh we look forward to great fire station.
Thanks, Walter.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thanks, Aaron.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you for your service.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor seconded to adjourn, uh and I think we said we took a vote, did we not?
Oh, we did.
Yeah, we did. All right, so ladies and gentlemen, it is eleven sixteen, and we are adjourned. Thank you.